Welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, April 9th, 2018. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Leaks May?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Mayor Porton Pollock?
Here.
Councilmember Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter?
I am also here, and we have a quorum this evening. Thank you. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I move second.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. We've been working together too long. We don't even have to finish our sentences. Is there discussion on the agenda? All right. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on now, we have a couple of presentations this evening, and the first one is by our Oakland County Commissioner, Helene Zach, and I believe I saw her walk in. There she is. Commissioner Zach, welcome.
It's a pleasure to be here, everybody. Wanted to tell you some things going on in Oakland County, and one of the things that I am doing this Thursday, I'm participating in a panel. Topic is opioids in the workplace. It's being done in conjunction with the Tri-Community Coalition, which is Huntington Woods, Oak Park, and Berkeley, and the Greater Detroit Area Health Council. And I'm actually speaking in my professional hat, which is about employee assistance programs and what employers can do to address opioids in the workplace. And if you're interested in that program, I think there might be a few seats later, but it's really, you know, they're selling out. You can go to HTTPS slash, you know, dot opioid in the workplace at eventbrite.com. So if you go into Eventbrite, they'll have it, and you can register that way. Another good event that's coming up is kind of like the last call. So one of the things that we discovered in Oakland County in comparison to Flint, the water issues, is that through our health department, we do test lakes regularly, larger lakes, but we have a lot of inland lakes that we don't have the resources to test. So one of the ways to address this, there is this nonprofit organization that will be training volunteers to go out and test the waters in other lakes. And if you are interested in this particular training, you can go to PC, STEEN, S-T-E-E-N at, it would be HRWC.org, and you will be, there is a training on Saturday, May 5th, from 9:00 to 12:30 p.m. at the Oakland County Commissioners Auditorium, and you can be trained to monitor lake levels. There's a lot of people that have signed up. I'm really excited. It's a volunteer citizen effort to help ensure that we have better quality water. Along those same lines, I've talked to you about new drinking fountains being available in Ferndale schools that have filtration, and those drinking fountains are available to the city and to other, you know, public agencies at the same cost, so that bulk rate purchasing, and I'm looking at our city manager, did you get a mailing about that? I made a report in one of my other cities, and they approached me afterwards, saying, can we get this in our city? And so it is being made available throughout the county, discounted rate, which I think is wonderful. I love my filtration drinking fountain at the county now. One of the things that we do have on our tax bills, we do pay a millage to the Detroit Institute of Arts, and one of the things that we get, we get free membership there when we go to the museum, and we also have community outreach programs. And I did recently review a report that they are exceeding our expectations in us getting our community investment. The numbers have gone up. I'm looking at our senior person there. They have Senior Day on Thursdays. We are taking advantage of bus, what?
Speakers.
Speakers.
DIA speaker on Wednesday.
They're having a DIA speaker on Wednesday, and I'm told if we want to get to some of our arts groups or seniors group, we might even be able to get the DIA Director, Salvatore, to come out and speak to, you know, larger community groups. So there's a lot of beautiful outreach, and they're getting better and better in doing that. We're getting our money back. So that's it for this evening. There is some movement to try and institutionalize our road, local road money project, that we've brought some local matching dollars. It was a pilot, but now one of my colleagues across the aisle is also trying to erase the pilot designation, so we can continue matching county with city dollars. So the more we can bring here, the better we want. So, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions of Commissioner Zach?
Thanks.
Nope. Thanks as always for being here. All right. Our next presentation is a progress update on the DOT project, also known as the development on Troy. Joe Gosho, you're going to introduce that?
Yes, Mayor and Council. One moment. Apparently I skipped right to the end of the presentation.
Oops.
You're welcome. I always like to blow you away with my fancy animation. You're welcome.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I'm here to give an update on the development on Troy. The last time you saw me was giving a presentation during late October. It was to approve of a concept, the planned unit development, which was then at that time approved by the Planning Commission, which was essentially, we were approving the uses that would be requested for the DOT, and then the actual site plan for the DOT. So the first thing I thought I would do was just revisit what those were. So for the councils and the public's perspective, the development on Troy, the DOT, is envisioned as four levels of parking, about 400 spaces. It's going to have street-level retail. We envision that to be still between 12,000 and 16,000 square feet. West Troy streetscape and place-making improvements as part of those streetscape improvements. We see that streetscape improvement being focused on pedestrian activity, really trying to slow the vehicle traffic down, even as it prepares to enter the DOT. And of course, alley beautification and greening. The private components would be the office space, which we envisioned about 40,000 square feet of office space that would be on top of the deck to be developed. And then a small residential component known as Parcel B situated along Allen Street, adjacent to West Troy. The residential will be seen as a small buffer to buffer the residential neighborhood bordering south of the development into the downtown. And then just some brief facts around it. The height of the structure is about 65 feet. The place-making elements, just to remind, we had a temporary public plaza, and what that means is because it's a shared-street concept, that means at times that the street wanted to be closed off, the way the street would be designed, it could be temporarily closed off for small Sunday gatherings, for example, small events. We're not talking about major special events. These would be deemed as small tabletop events for the community, for the neighborhood. And of course, community meeting spaces would be a part of that. Financing estimates remain the same. The city expects to issue $20 million bonds to be paid for out of the auto parking fund, which is separate than the city's general fund. Revenues that support the auto parking fund include all revenues that are paid for by the paid parking system. Such revenues include parking revenues, parking enforcement associated revenues, revenues from the meters, permitting revenues, for example. So what have we been working on since then? So I've had the stock image, and I was dying for an excuse to use it. It's the art of negotiation. Talking about what we've been working on since that PUD has been adopted, we had to begin to pursue what those private elements would look like on the DOT. So as soon as we had the PUD approval from City Council, we issued a request for qualifications, which is what that's called, to the developer community. And we said to the developers, we just had this planned unit development picture approved, and are you interested in bidding out to develop the office space, the residential space, and/or the retail space? And we put that proposal out there to the market, and we just said, give us some reactions. And so we gave them a couple months. The proposal deadline was towards the holidays in December. We reviewed those proposals in January, and then through January, through March, we've been vetting those proposals. And as is typical with most developers, they're going to provide you alternative concepts to the PUD that has been approved by the public. So regardless, we received those alternative proposals. We spent time vetting those proposals, and I'm going to talk about what that looked like. It wasn't all anger like this. So PUD facts, first let's establish the facts behind the private uses. So the office space within the PUD that was approved was 39,000 square feet of office space. We're looking at those office spaces being built on levels five and six situated on top of the deck, on top of a transfer slab that would enable that future office development. And then the residential piece, it's tough in that lime green, I know, poor planning. Residential is separated from the actual garage. It's known as Parcel B. So there's a separating component there. We would condo that out, and that structure is actually residential, is 55 feet in height. That is what was approved within the PUD. And so what could be built there is, we would imagine, now this again would be up to a developer, but they would have to propose this to the Planning Commission, which would be a secondary approval on the PUD. We would envision that to be 24 to 28 units, but regardless, the box has been drawn, right? It's at 55 feet, the box has been drawn already. So they have the square footage that they can work with, and that's within the PUD. And then the retail, of course, that's street-level retail that fronts along West Troy Street, and that is at the front of the DOT, the parking, so parking behind it, and that is looking at 11,500 square feet to 16,000 square feet of retail, depending on the square footage that is used for the frontage along West Troy Street. And of course, according to the master land use plan, and of course, according to the strategic plan, City Council's strategic plan, and our downtown development goals, we're looking for active street-level uses, not passive street-level uses. So we want really active windows there, right? We don't want to see no activity on the street level right there. So initial market responses to the PUD private mixed uses. We have, what those animations didn't work out either. Regarding the office, I've segmented kind of just summaries of what we heard. So from the office perspective, what we heard is that there was a resistance to build the office without a certain percentage of pre-lease requirements. What we call that is they won't build on spec. That is just the industry term. And that is speculative, is what that is shortened for, speculative development. So there was less interest in building the office. And in short, they, what we heard is they don't believe that there is financing available to pursue the office, because you would have to go and get a certain percent, a high percentage of pre-leased, that space pre-leased through, or presold. And so they call that speculative development. Since they would have to do a lot of work to get that, they don't have access to the financing. So there's less interest in pursuit to the office from the development community, from the respondents that we heard of. So they posed to suggest to eliminate the office, and in lieu of that, we'll move to the middle column, the residential. The suggestion, which was pretty consistent throughout most, all the responses, would be to add more units, increase the square footage of residential on the site, and increase the height to support the units, right? So what we heard is that access to financing to support development from the developer community was more accessible in support of residential. And from retail, there was consistent interest in controlling the retail space on West Troy, and it was understood that the city desires to curate quality retail and local retail is preferred. That was understood by every developer. So the, and I would say that a different way, we are not looking to land a big box nationwide at tenant downtown. Sounds counterintuitive, but we're not.
We're not.
That's who we are. Those are our values. So city reactions to those developer reactions. This is, this is again happening over the last three months. These were a lot of conversations. One, public input. We wanted to stay firm that we have spent the last 18 months conducting several public meetings, several focus groups, and we had a steering committee give specific input working alongside the Planning Commission, and we didn't arrive at the given PUD in any short form. So the PUD that was approved by the Planning Commission, City Council, in October was arrived at under considerable work with considerable public input. And to stray away from that with such a short time period would be difficult. We would be hard-pressed to make that recommendation to the public or City Council. Office, with respect to office. Our objective for pursuing the initial 39,000 square feet of office is supported by a downtown market study, a downtown office study that was conducted by Gibbs Planning prior to our pursuit of all of this in 2015 and 16, that said we had the absorption to absorb, I believe it was up to 75,000 square feet of office by 2022, and 50,000 of that by 2020, so in the coming years. So what we did is we tried to go for a big chunk of that out of this project, most of that. So our goals for office remain to be to diversify the downtown economy, again, offering that daytime economy to balance our tilted nighttime economy, to add new jobs to the downtown, and to, of course, add the daytime parking demand, because as we do know from our parking studies and anecdotally from our visitors downtown, we have a little bit of a saturated parking market tilting towards the 4 o'clock to 9 o'clock hours on Thursday, Fridays, and Saturdays, and that is beginning to exacerbate the parking in our inner parking lots. So right, we're still trying to solve that problem in office, helps solve that problem since the majority of those hours are between 9 and 5. In terms of financial performance, our reactions to those conversations, we really seek to, we understand the value of the DOT and its situation in downtown, and we seek to leverage those opportunities to achieve certain public benefits and so, and land value performance, and to achieve the city's vision goals. So I just wanted to highlight that we are thinking about, when developers approach us about this project, we think about how we help deliver affordable housing policy, how we help make sure that there's access to small and local business, small and local business, excuse me, to make sure that we are fighting for active street uses, again, public space, and of course, that the city gets an adequate return for land valuation. And that we do make sure that we recognize that the city is putting in significant investment towards public infrastructure, which developers always, don't always recognize. That includes building a lot of parking that they would benefit from, streetscape improvements, alley improvements, water infrastructure, all the utilities that are in the deck that are supporting any of the development around it. So these are the things that we make sure that we fight for every day. However, taking into consideration everything we heard and learned from developers, we still want to make sure that we remain flexible, and we do understand that we can course correct, and to course correct is to innovate, and to innovate is to adapt to what you've learned. And so what have we learned over the past couple months? This is just a quote by Max McKeown, who is an innovation strategist for several Fortune 500 companies, and his focus is on just the ability to adapt to new information. And so with that, we have, our adaptation is what we're calling PUD Slim, and that is just a slimmed-down version of the PUD. So with respect to developers proposing to not build office and to push back and to build residential in its place, we respectfully would disagree, and we would say at this point, we think we should pursue the course of the original vision. However, we think with respect to what we have learned about the market and access to finance and the challenges of office, what we think is take a different approach. And so philosophically, what that different approach looks like with PUD Slim is small wins could deliver big results. So we think we start small. And that means reducing the initial ask of the office. We pursue, in our tendency, looking at 15,000 to 20,000 square feet. And so that makes it a little bit more bite-sized and manageable possibly for future developers in the pursuit of constructing that office. So that reduces the size of that initial office ask, 40,000. However, we still want to make sure that we include the opportunity to grow, and so we will ensure that from an engineering perspective and a design perspective, we will allow for that. And so what that looks like is just, is creating a stacked 20,000-square-foot office on the east side of the project, on the Woodward side of the project. It all faces the West Troy side. Again, this doesn't chase, change the fact that there's a 60-foot setback from the residence. That all remains the same. We don't change anything else from the PUD. And how that implicates design, again, we're looking at taking a phased approach for the office, rather than trying to go big or go home and swing for the fences on the first shot. We think this is a much more manageable approach. Our broker agreed with us. We've been testing this with a lot of our partners as well, including our bond attorneys, seeking advice from a lot of our partners in our ecosystem, who have a lot of experience in getting feedback on this approach, and there's good support for this approach in our reaction. And so getting to the design implications, this would add some parking spaces on top. This would allow for that, this change. This isn't a lot of parking spaces. Those parking spaces are on the West Troy side, the commercial side, again. And this would remove those most expensive spaces from the deepest part of the ground. So we're still going on below, but we're not going to the deepest space underground. So we're still building underground, though. But those are also the most expensive spaces. This provides for the flexibility, the flexible office space that we need to take a phased approach. The residential height, you'll see all the other numbers remain the same. So that's why we're calling it PUD Slim. And so here's just kind of a roadmap. If you look at the arrow, this is the decision point moving forward in the PUD context. We are at that point. We just had to take a break and vet those proposals. We thought that that was a worthy thing to do, to vet those proposals, and we think that this is a good compromise from where we have come from. And just in summary, moving forward, next steps, what can you expect for the private uses? We are going to continue to pursue listing strategies with our brokers on the residential and office spaces, on the private uses and the retail as well. We are continuing to work with our partners in the MEDC, Oakland County, and the SBA on other incentives and financial structuring, what we can do to help provide some structures to make those relationships attractive for developers. And we are going to continue to remain committed to the city's vision and the values and the process that got us here. From the public use perspective, we have kick-started the design and engineering forward again. We had already gotten through a significant part of the process, so we've come a long way already. We are going to work towards the development of the RFP and posting the bids. We think that can happen within a matter of eight weeks or so. Then it's bid review and award, and then it's towards mobilization and groundbreaking. And thank you for your time and feedback.
All right. Questions for Joe? That's a lot of information.
It's only 10 slides.
I know. Good information.
You've grown past that, Joe. We don't harp on number slides anymore.
Are there questions for Joe?
I guess I have a couple.
Well, I do have one. You mentioned that the office would be basically cut in half, and the development of the office would be on the east end of the building, the Woodward end of the building. Is there a reason why that side was chosen as opposed to the west end? And are we taking into consideration future development of that additional office space and the impact it will have in the future? Will it impact, will the impact be worse if it's done on the west end, or will the impact be worse if it's done on the east end in the future?
We don't believe that the, that either side will impact the other. I think the Woodward end is being pursued out of respect for the potential for a future residential development to occur on Parcel B on the west side. It is separate to the deck, but we would have the, it would allow for a small buffer in parking to exist between the residential and the office.
They're not switching sides.
So it's not separated by, so they're contiguous, in other words?
Yeah. The residential will stay on the west end, and the office will stay on the east end.
Yes, I know that, but originally, the office was going to be on the entire top side. Now it's just going to be on the east side, and we're having the, we're not doing...
Starting with the east side.
Yes. And so the west side, the west half of the top, the fifth and sixth floor, fourth and fifth floor, is going to be vacant, basically. Pardon?
It's going to be some parking spaces.
Temporary parking, but it's going to have that transition deck so that five years from now, we could build two stories of office on that end. Is that what I'm understanding?
You could build actually on that, on the parking spaces themselves through an engineering. We're going to be engineering to accommodate for that. So our engineer is going to be allowing for the ability to infill those parking spaces to build the actual deck, to, I'm sorry, to build the actual office space, should we sell it?
In the future.
In the future.
Okay. And that's what I'm saying is, in the future...
Now, if we're able to sell 39,000 square feet like that tomorrow, then that's great.
Understand that. So my question is, the building has been built, it's five years from now, and we're going to, someone wants to develop that west side. Is that going to be more of an impact within the community, because now you have Allen and Troy that's going to be impacted, that entire intersection, while that construction is going on? Or would the east end be easier or less impacted if it was developed five years from now?
I can get feedback from our engineer, but they haven't expressed that concern. But I'm happy to get that question. I don't have...
I'm just concerned about the community. Who's going to get more, you know, who's going to be more impacted? I would like to be less impacted.
Sure. Yeah, understood.
Okay. I think I got my thought across.
You did.
Okay.
And I understand...
Thank you.
...what you're expressing. Yep.
Couple questions for you, Joe. So we did the Gibbs report, which showed that there was a certain market for office space, and then we did the RFQ.
The RFQ, Request Qualifications.
Yes. And I don't think you conveyed just how dramatic the response was. I don't think we got anybody that wanted to build offices, right? Or almost nobody, no credit, zero. Everyone said you can't do 40,000 square feet of office. Okay, you know, you learn from what the market tells you, I guess, but I guess my question, and maybe this isn't fair, but was the Gibbs report wrong, or how do you interpret what Gibbs told us versus what the market has now shown us?
We would look at the, we would look at our local market, what we know of our local market, our local development opportunities, and we would look at our local office businesses who are expanding and who are capitalizing on opportunities, and we would see a different story. And we would also still look at all of the rationalizations from the Gibbs plan, and we would agree with those plans, and so would our broker. And again, this isn't us making a decision in a silo. We've tested this against our, against our broker and against other developers and against other economic development professionals, and Oakland County and the state. And so I guess, I guess one could say, is the question, is the city making this decision on a hunch? I would say, no, it's supported by our knowledge of the local economy, of the city of Ferndale's economy, and the city of Ferndale's needs.
In other words, the developers are wrong, but you can't force them to build something. But I suspect part of it is because Ferndale is not a proven office market. So they're used to building in Troy, they're used to building in Farmington Hills and Southfield. They're not used to building office space in Ferndale. So even though the experts say, no, there's a demand for it, and you can sell it, it just hasn't been their experience, and their financial people are telling them...
Yeah, the market's not mature enough.
Through the chair, it's not also what I've heard from business owners who want Class A office space as well in Ferndale. So there's definitely a mismatch in what information we have been...
Well, I think the answer's risk, right? The developers, the developers got a certain amount of risk they'll tolerate. The market's telling us something different, but their financial, you know, risk changes their point of acceptance a little bit, I think. their point of acceptance a little bit, I think.
Well, through the chair, correct me if I'm wrong, but residential, historically, has always been cheaper to develop and generally has a better return on investment than office does.
The developers that I've spoken to have made similar comments to that, and they've also had said that residential are just...
Well, it's the hot thing, you know, it's, oh...
It's a sure thing right now. Residential market is red hot.
And we would argue that residential from the private markets bringing residential right now by themselves, and that the city definitely doesn't necessarily need to incentivize the development of a lot more residential right now, as we already have developers bringing residential on their own without the city.
So just a couple of other quick questions. If we don't ultimately end up building the other twenty thousand-ish square feet of office, is the project still sustainable within its budget and within the auto capital fund?
Yes, the parking system can still make the payment on the bond.
Okay. And then finally, you said we were at a sort of a decision point, but do you actually need a decision, or what's the process now?
So, and I say that at the decision point because we really needed to decide whether we wanted to consider, because there were some serious proposals, and there were some developers who wanted to move forward with some alternative recommendations publicly. And we were at a decision point of whether that had to be vetted and whether it was worthy of moving forward for public consideration or not. And the decision point is really what's on top drives, what's built below. And so that would have, we would have had to change all of our design and engineering calculations. And so that would have been a significant...
Timely and expensive.
Yes. So, that said, we wanted to vet it carefully, but at some point, there had to be a decision to be made on what paths to move forward. And at this point, we weren't, we didn't see the evidence to compel us to change direction.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Through the chair, just further clarification. On one of the slides, you, the original plan was three hundred and ninety-seven spaces, parking spaces, the, what do you call it, PUD Slim?
PUD Slim.
Is four hundred. Now, you explained that with the slim version, we are not going as deep, and we are providing parking on the top level of the west, what you're saying, the west end of where the office would have been. If that office is developed, how much spaces, how many spaces are on that top level? Because if that office is developed, you lost those parking spaces. So then, how much, how many spaces are we going to lose if that other end is developed?
Yeah, these, these final figures are still being engineered, but I have told the engineer that the net, the net outcome can't be less than the PUD. And so to your point, yeah, if that, if that space is developed for office and we lose those spaces on top, then we have to anticipate to accommodate for that within other levels of the deck. And so they understand that they're looking to add spaces in the remaining levels, level four, level three, level one, and we'll probably keep a couple of the expensive spaces in the bottom.
So really, the, the PUD Slim could have more than four hundred spaces?
It could. It could.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Thank you. Carry on. I know it's a long and arduous journey, but thank you, Joe, for taking us down it. All right. The next item of business is called the audience, and that is your opportunity, if you're here in the audience, to address counsel on any item that's not on the agenda, because we'll give you an opportunity to speak to those items when we get to that part of the agenda. But if you want to speak to counsel on any item not on the agenda, come on up, give us your name, and three minutes is yours. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Monica Crawford. I live at 1-604 Shevlin. I got a lot of arguments with you. We have a very, very bad road. We've had a bad road for umpteen years. I've lived here over seventy-three years, and I've never seen anything really done good over there.
I'm sorry, I missed the street that you're on.
Shevlin.
Shevlin.
Many years ago, there was one restaurant at the corner, but there was a vacant lot beside it, where now, then Red's Auto Glass went in. When that restaurant was there, it was called Frosty Lanes, and the people who had it wanted to add on because they had a good business, but was told by Ferndale they could not add on because they would not have enough adequate parking. Fine, so Red came in, he added on. His wife had a restaurant, no good parking. Now we have two restaurants there on that section. These people going to the restaurant, there is supposed to be no parking on the south side of Shevlin. They don't care. They don't read the sign. The sign says, "Fire route." We also have at least twelve buses every day, dropping off children at seven-thirty in the morning, picking them up various times of the day, and the big Lotus at two-thirty in the afternoon when the kids come out. They park across the driveways, they don't care what they're doing, you have a hard time getting them to move. So meanwhile, the roads are going to heck. We have all this problem and congestion with the restaurants, and I feel they should be forced to have adequate parking. They don't. I noticed tonight coming over that the business down right next to them has out, I'm assuming they're the ones, there's a cyclone fence prohibiting people from going over to the other place. There were signs there, but maybe people were going in, I don't know. But I just think something should be done, and we should have a good street put in. We need a good street badly, but we've never had a good one put in. We've only had, and the last one was the worst, because it never lasted over, the first year there was all holes by the edges. Plus, years ago, when I got the slips yet, we paid for curb and gutter on our street. Well, that lasted about as long as it takes to think about it, because they came in and they covered up the gutter, and we now got a curb about like so. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done on that street. And I would like somebody to really, this gentleman I talked to last week, and he said he did take a look at it.
Is it on the, on the, on the program? Why don't you want to just address that? You know, we are doing a road...
Well, I saw, but I didn't see the particular part listed, because we're, I'm on Shevlin, right off of Hilton, and this is bad all the way over to Chester, where there's like a little V.
I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, Carlos, but are you familiar with it, and can you address at least the road, the road condition portion?
It's a little chilly today, it really is. She did come in last week, we spoke, I believe it was on Friday.
Yeah.
And also calling us Scott. We're going to go out and look at some areas. I know we can move some streets around if need be, within reason, and that's one of the things we're looking at right now.
All right. He's big, but he's friendly, ma'am, I promise.
Well, yeah, he's tall.
Yeah. And then, and then chief, I guess I would just ask you, you know, her other issue being that it's no parking, and yet there's lots of parking there. Is that an area that you're familiar with, or that we could do extra runs on, or that's on your radar at all?
We can, I believe that the traffic control officer is holding for it, but we can put it...
Well, you know, I have called the police sometimes, because when, for a while, there was a man living there who was on oxygen, and they would park across the driveway, and his wife was told, if they had to come back, it was a fifty-dollar charge. Didn't face them, you know, they just don't, so, but he's now since passed away. But I hate calling the police, because they got a lot of other things to do sometimes, you know? And by the time they get there, these people who are messing around, they ate and left. But it's, it's just that it's a real...
You know, we pay them good, call the police, they don't mind coming out, they really don't. You're not bothering them.
I know, and one of the policemen actually lived in the neighborhood, and he's combined just to see us, and, you know, he's talked about what a bad situation there is over there, said he's bad, he don't live around there anymore, but...
All right.
So I would appreciate if something could be done to alleviate the parking and the lousy road.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. And thank you, Carlos.
Oh, I have a suggestion through the chair, one moment. There is a school, you did mention parking with the school, and it's something perhaps we could work with the school district as well. I believe it's the Hazel Park School.
It's Hazel, yeah, because it's Edison.
Hazel Park School District, so work with them to help look at traffic flow during peak times for schools. Yeah, we'll have them look at, we'll have them contact the school district in Hazel Park to see if we can tackle that problem too, okay? Thank you.
I'm sorry, the school board didn't really...
Oh. Good evening.
My name is Martha Sempliner. I own 1-63 through 1-71 West Nine Mile, and I've owned Library Bookstore, which is in there for thirty-five years. My understanding, I'm very unhappy about this DOT project. My understanding is that all we really need is parking. My understanding also is that almost every city around here has a zoning ordinance that says that if you are, if you're building right near a residential street, the building can't be higher than seventy, than thirty feet. What is Ferndale doing, going, that it wants to have a seventy-foot building? My understanding also is that even though the project was supposed to have started by now, that developers have not wanted to move into it because of this zoning restriction. I'd like to see more of that published and put out to the citizens around here. When the, if and when the project starts, what's going to happen to both people who want to park and to the businesses? Where are the people who are working on the projects going to park? And then, where will people who want to go to businesses park? This is going to be a very difficult situation. And for fifteen months, it's going to go on like that? I'm very distrustful of the whole nature of this project. Again, my understanding is that parking is all that we really need. And as far as putting in more businesses, maybe encouraging landlords to not put in bars and restaurants, but to put in real individual effort and not things that are only open in the evening. I hope there is serious pushback against all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel this evening? Again, on items not on the agenda, we'll get to those. Anyone?
I guess not on the agenda. I guess I'm thanking the Ferndale Police for working on slowing down traffic that's on my street, Bowfield. We get a lot of cars going forty miles an hour, sometimes fifty, and then they slow down to about thirty-three at the end of the block. And I'm glad they're trying to work with us to eliminate some of the speeding on our street. I also commonly see it on Albany and, you know, Pine Crest, the speed limit's not thirty, it's, you know, forty or whatever you want to. I really would like to see the traffic laws enforced in the city where it would actually be twenty-five in a residential street, where people would actually want to stay in Ferndale. Because I've, some people on my street have moved to nice quiet parts in our park and are pretty glad of it. So I'd really like to see the traffic laws enforced in Ferndale, especially like twenty-five miles an hour in residential streets. Hunting Woods does it really well. We know that the speed limit is twenty-five in Hunting Woods. I'd like to have some similar enforcement at Ferndale. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Bernie Fraiser. I live at 346 West Saratoga. Thank you, Joe, for your presentation. Something that's not on the agenda, I wanted to ask about changing our street to permit parking only, especially, you know, our street is two-sided parking, and it is horrible during the festivals and that, when they close it down and make it permit-only parking, it's beautiful. Especially with the DOT going into effect, it's going to get worse because people aren't going to have anywhere to park with those parking lots, so our street's going to become even worse. So I'm asking if maybe that could be something that could be looked at.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your address?
I'm at 346 West Saratoga, right behind that beautiful parking garage that's going to go up. So it's right between Allen and...
Right. Yep.
Yeah, Bernie, actually, over the coming weeks, I'm working on, I will be working with our attorney on some ordinance update language in the ordinance committee on actually proposing just that, how we might move forward the transitioning, permanent-only parking, similar to what's over on Vestor and, I believe, East Breckenridge, bringing that into the same, but that would require an update to the ordinance to accommodate the street.
Through the chair, why does it require an update to the ordinance when there's an applicable language that allows the city to invoke their permit street parking with a certain number of signatures?
I would ask the city attorney, but I believe we make a...
She said I'm right.
Oh.
I know, I helped write the ordinance.
Well, there's a designation, RPG in our POP.
And it can be initiated by council, you're correct, without the, without the petition.
I appreciate you crossing your i's, dotting your i's and crossing your d's.
Absolutely, I mean this in no way of criticism, I just, I don't think it's necessary. I think we can do it today.
Council could direct that to be studied and brought back.
As opposed to, I'm sorry...
Two different, through the chair, two methods...
I didn't write the ordinance, so remind me, counsel.
In order to, that to be considered by council, can be by citizen petition or initiative being brought to the attention of council, or the city staff can bring that issue, or council could direct that the matter be brought back to council for consideration.
Yeah.
But would you want to, I'm just throwing this out there, would you want to bypass the citizen input part if there was a majority of residents that didn't want it? And I'm guessing there might not be, but there could be. Would we, I'm just...
I, I'm supportive of it. If the street wants it, I think I would prefer that we do the petition route, just to make sure you've got neighbors' consensus.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, just get it.
Yeah, we could do that, and I have your contact information, so I could send it to you, Bernie. And then the other thing that I wanted to do is take time to work with Republic Parking to study the, just the enforcement procedure piece of it too, to make sure that we're doing it correctly.
Yeah. Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
Anyone else like to address counsel? All right, we'll move on then to the next item of business, which is a public hearing. And the public hearing is to review text amendments to the Central Business District Site Plan Review and Landscaping Ordinances. Justin, you're going to introduce that item?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
So I'll kind of give a broad overview on what we've been talking about for the past ten to twelve months or so. Essentially, it's not news to anyone. There's a lot of development kind of focused in the downtown. And so coming out of the master plan process adopted early in 2017, this district was kind of looked at as a priority for maybe tweaking some of the ordinance and refining some things a bit to ensure that the city and residents and businesses are all getting the types of development that we want to see. A lot of that is really focused around design. So, you know, we did have a decent and robust ordinance, I think, previously, but these updates essentially will bring some items that were more of guidelines and best practices into actual code, and so we can ensure that future additions and new buildings are being designed the way we want. So this is just a overview of kind of, not the entire timeline, but a good portion of it. A lot of the discussions that happened around this ordinance have been going on for years, but also in, during the master plan process. So in June, we had some joint meetings where council and the planning commission got together and reviewed, you know, what do we want downtown to look like, and what are the things that we've seen in current development that we're not so thrilled about? We also had some architects come in and speak and, you know, kind of hear from them and see what they're seeing in other communities, as well as when they've done projects in the city, what, you know, they would be looking for in a new ordinance update. Throughout the rest of the process, we've really met with a number of commissions and boards, so the DDA staff, as well as the DDA Board, Design Committee, and Appearance Review Committee. And then, of course, meeting with the planning commission a number of times over potential drafts. And really, in February is when we finally got to a public hearing for that portion with the planning commission, and we've since that time incorporated a lot of those edits into the draft that you see before you. And so this is very, like I said, this is very much a broad overview, and I'm happy to get into more of the technical elements after the public hearing.
And I'm sorry, could you just go back one slide for a second? Just a quick question. But when you say it's been to the planning commission, been to the DDA, and the DDA, and they all vote, they took formal votes, correct?
Yes, the DDA Board and Planning Commission had took formal votes. The other boards, there weren't really votes, just more of working committees, and their feedback was really incorporated in this. feedback was really incorporated in this.
Thank you.
So really touched a lot of different folks in the process. So we already know that downtown Ferndale is, you know, walkable. We've had a lot of placemaking elements that have been put in over the years. But what we're trying to do is really focus on design and streamlining the process and continuing that trend of walkability and placemaking. So right now, there is the current Central Business District. That's generally the downtown, that portion of the downtown on West Nine Mile, essentially to Livernoy, and then on East Mile, basically to Paxton. So within that, there's also a transit overlay district, which if you had your zoning map in front of you, that's just an overlay that was done a few years ago that kind of put in some additional parameters and said, you know, as the city, we're focusing on development that is planning for future transit, whatever that may be, and the existing transit that exists on Woodward and Nine Mile. So what we've decided, or what we've proposed for this draft ordinance is to essentially divide portions, different streets and sections of the downtown into the downtown core and urban flux district. And I'll get into more of what that all means, but it's kind of something that in the master plans recommended as phase two to look at with some other corridors like Livernoy and Hilton and things like that. Obviously, not pushing the height and density that we're looking at for downtown, but there's certainly things to be learned and to make those corridors a little bit more walkable and thriving as well. So when a developer or a business is looking to add on a building or put a new building and do some type of development downtown, right now, they look at just the zoning ordinance map and the ordinance that goes with it. This is a sub-district map that essentially just regulates how future development would go, would be pursued in the downtown. So you can see in purple is the downtown core, the urban flux is in blue, and the red area allows for some bonus site, which I'll get into. And then we also carved out a section of street that has a front setback facing Nine Mile that kind of continues that walkable feel that we have today, if any of those projects had additions in the future. So I won't go through all of this, but really, what the overall principle of this update is to focus on design. And, you know, we're not really changing the permitted uses that are in this district. We're not really diving into, you know, signage and things like that in this update. This is more focused on if, how are you designing these, the form of the future buildings and the appearance, and how do those buildings and designs relate to the street? So you'll see some new terms in the zoning ordinance that I'll get into in a minute. But we're also trying to encourage inclusive housing. City Council adopted a policy recently, and we've been talking quite a bit about housing, and a lot of that is happening downtown. But most of that, nearly all of that housing is market rate. So we're kind of providing a carrot to some potential developers that if you'd like to, you know, build a certain height of a building, you need to provide some inclusive housing that is specific to our policy. So the state of Michigan kind of limits certain things we can do when we're trying to encourage inclusive housing, and so this allows us to work within that framework. I mentioned the sub-districts where there's also some frontage types. So there's more layers to this ordinance to make sure that we are getting the form that we want, and I'll get into those as well. Speeding up, not speeding up, but more of streamlining, making sure that all of the design guidelines that were in different parts of the ordinance and different policies are now going to be all in one centralized place, which just helps when site plans are submitted. Being more consistent with height, you'll kind of see there's a cookie cutter approach that was in the previous ordinance that worked for a while, and I think this streamlines that a bit. Also, make sure that new buildings, there are required to provide parking, but are not doing so in a way that damages the walkable nature of downtown. And then landscaping-wise, we're encouraging some more low-impact development standards for stormwater management and providing some of the sustainable elements that we've been talking about for years. But really, this is intended to just continue the strengths of what we have and remain walkable, but providing guidance for design that we're, we've been requesting from developers over the years. This update considers transitions to other residential zones, because obviously, we're not a huge city. We do have residential zones surrounding the downtown, so that has been thought about. And then encouraging different types of architecture that can pull from old, can pull from new, but kind of puts all of those checkboxes in one area in the ordinance. Showing where trees and bike parks should be on a site more clearly. Allowing for some of the businesses that have been in Ferndale for years and some of the buildings that have been in Ferndale for years have some of those entryways. And if someone were to build new today before this ordinance is updated, there isn't really that flexibility. But this new, these new amendments allow for those sort of entries, entryways that are unique to our downtown.
If I may, through the chair. You mentioned something regarding the inclusive housing policy. My question is, yes, the developments that are coming downtown, for the most part, are market rate. But have there, has there been any interest in new planning developments, including that inclusive housing policy, is what I would love to know.
Sure. There's not been, I would say, official plans for anything submitted, but, you know, anyone that's came to the Community Economic Development Department and has been talking about housing, we've been having this conversation with them, and kind of just saying, you know, this is what we, this is what we want. And so I think some of them are open to it.
Okay.
But again, nothing formal has been submitted for anything like that yet.
I see.
So I think it is very new to a lot of Michigan developers, is my experience with it so far. You're starting to see more of it happen in Detroit, but really, we're probably one of four or five cities in the state that even are pushing for something like this. But, so if we have to blaze the trail and get it our way, then we will. That's a great question. So getting into the different sections, so the downtown core, so that really just are the streets that you would think of, Woodward, West Troy, Nine Mile. Making sure that we have some continuous building facades along the ground floor, which is already something that's been required, but this allows for more architectural variety. And making sure that we're promoting, it actually says in the ordinance, we are preferring active uses on the street level. So this encourages that main street sort of feel and encourages reuse of buildings, frankly, and that's what we would love to see. Urban flux is the other district I've talked about that really provides that transition to the other adjacent residential zones. So that allows for townhomes and things like that that really aren't permitted in the current ordinance, the way it's framed now. So you do get a little bit more of a setback, so there's sort of that townhome feel there. And then in those districts, it was very important throughout the development on Troy process and the master plan process to consider how, like, what is that transition to those adjacent residential districts? And so above the third story, we're requiring that those frontages are set back fifteen feet above that third story. So that kind of makes it feel like when you're walking by, there's a pedestrian scale, but also allowing for more units in those areas where it's appropriate. Along with that, each of those sub-districts has two different frontage types. And you can kind of see there, storefront is more of your traditional downtown feel, closer to the sidewalk. You may have an awning there, but really, you're maximizing your frontage potential, whereas that stoop frontage has that sort of townhouse, townhome type of feel. It's important to note that the stoop frontage is not permitted in that downtown core. We probably wouldn't want that in the middle of downtown, but on the transitional areas, it could make a lot of sense. Height, we talked about quite a bit throughout the whole process and through the DOT as well. And so on the left is just an image of kind of when people were looking to develop something in Ferndale, there was kind of a mishmash of heights. And so there is some variety still, I think, in what we're proposing, but clarifies, I think, some of the confusion that was there before. So the picture on the left is from the ordinance when that was updated in 2010. The minimum building height, that really isn't changing from what was updated, I think, in 2013 with the transit overlay district. And that's to encourage a little bit more density, provided that those sites meet parking requirements and things like that. But the big thing, I guess, on this page, and if, you'll see it in red on the regulating plan that I showed earlier, is where you can get that bonus height. It's already permitted to be seventy feet in height in those areas. So we're saying, you know, developer, you could get additional ten feet in height if you meet some requirements. And so that is minimum, they would have to provide inclusive or affordable housing units. And then they would also have to provide some other public benefit, whether that be sustainability features, open space, or providing parking that is available to the entire public, where we might have a shortage. So that's trying to, for the residents and businesses in the city, that's really trying to say, we want some sort of community benefit if you're going to develop here in Ferndale. So...
So if I may, through the chair, just to clarify...
Sure.
We spent a lot of time on this on Planning Commission. The overall height requirements are not changing, except in the bonus district, which is predominantly up and down Woodward Avenue. And the only way they qualify for the additional ten feet is if they can prove a certain level of community benefit in exchange for the additional ten feet.
Correct.
And we were pretty specific about what we call community benefit in the ordinance.
Correct, yes. So, and we started with a list of a number of things, and we said, you know, that is a little bit too subjective. Here are some concrete things that would be required if you're going to get that ten feet.
And if I...
Go ahead.
And then the only thing I would add to that, there were some height changes, minor height changes, I would say, on the north side of West Nine Mile, Livernoy to Plantavon. And talking about that, that section of the street, there's already a seventy-foot tall building there, and it's a little bit of a wider area, so that's essentially why we chose that. But the rest of the urban flux is all fifty-five feet. And then we, we've also clarified some setbacks that weren't in this ordinance before. In the past, you would have to have a rear level setback facing residential that didn't really make a ton of sense. So now we're just saying the entire building has to be ten feet back if there's an alley present, or twenty feet back if there's not an alley present. So that provides the same effect as that upper-level setback, but just it's the entire building instead of kind of a Lego, if you will.
Right, thank you.
New terms, I won't dive into these too much unless you really want to, but it's really just to ensure that we get the form we want. So there's a new line that we call, it's a build-to line where, parallel to a public street or right-of-way, buildings have to be constructed to. So in the downtown core, you have to build eighty percent to this build-to line, which allows for that twenty percent where you could have a, you know, a pocket that is outdoor seating, or a pocket that is just green space, or provide some of that, those entryways I've talked about that found sound, and some of those businesses have. One thing that was a big deal with some of the projects that have been proposed recently is that you end up with a blank wall because people are proposing parking right behind that. So we're saying, within thirty feet of that line, that build-to line, you're not allowed to have parking. So that encourages more, you can put an independent retail shop there, something like that, instead of just a blank wall with parking right behind it. And that just contributes to the walkability features we've been talking about. And then architectural variety, I think this is probably one of the more important parts of the ordinance, but, so on the right is an example of some variety. So you have some glass there on the bottom floor. You have also some windows up top and some cornices and some items like that. But really, just, when you, when you build something besides a giant Lego block that is a long building, then you have more variety. It just feels, feels different, it feels less imposing, feels more friendly when you're pedestrian walking by. And so we're requiring things like fenestrations, and that's just openings in buildings, in building walls, like windows and doors. So not, not really a change, but more of a emphasis point, we're requiring eighty percent of windows on the ground floor, and that kind of makes it just feel like a more walkable, active area. Furthermore, these are just areas where we're allowing folks, if they do a development or addition, they could potentially put things in this amenity zone. And that could be bike racks, benches, lighting, things like that. Of course, they would have to meet the standards that we have for what the DDA already allows downtown, or any, you know, future changes to that. But we're putting some clarity on where those types of things would be. So that's sort of the high-level portion of it. You probably saw the ordinance is pretty long and lengthy, but I think it's kind of what we needed to update. So we're seeking adoption tonight, of course, after the public hearing. And then also, just wanted to point out, so we've had a lot of ordinance updates from the master plan over the past few years. We have a new source, a resource on the city's website. And essentially, this is just keeping track of everything that we're doing and recently. So I encourage people to have questions on other things going on or want to contribute to some of the other ordinances being updated. This will show what those ordinances are and when what meetings they'll be discussed at.
All right, well, thank you. So this is a public hearing, and so this would be the opportunity now. I'll open the public hearing, and this is an opportunity for anyone who, from the public who is here, to talk on this subject, to come on up. And same requirements as call the audience, which is give us your name, your address, and three minutes is yours to address us on this topic.
Dennis Augustin, 1550 Spencer. Councilman Martin, what would the city consider a benefit to get that extra ten feet? What are some of the things that would, the city would have to see to get this extra ten feet or so, whatever you're talking for, these building heights?
Chair, Justin, do you have the list? I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry. I reviewed it at Planning Commission, but it's a good question. Thanks, Dennis.
So initially, a project would have to provide twenty-five percent, so if they're proposing a hundred units, twenty-five percent of those would have to be inclusive housing, for one. That'd be the first thing. And then after that...
Also noted is affordable housing.
Affordable housing, yes. We kind of use both terms. So the other pieces that people can choose from is providing a percentage of open space, public space, so five percent of the area would have to be publicly accessible, and that's kind of the key term, publicly accessible. So it couldn't just be residents of that development. Also, lead-accredited buildings, so kind of providing more of the sustainable elements, whether that be a green roof or like solar panels on the rooftop. And then also, public, publicly accessible parking spaces. So those would have to be something that a developer would create, and they would have to go into the city's public parking system.
But, Justin, let me clarify, it's actually, there's two conditions there. There's the affordable housing condition, and in addition, one of the other three that he mentioned, the lead certification, open space, or the public parking.
Right. Well, then I, I'm sorry, through the chair...
It's not our turn yet. Public's turn.
Yeah, um, just take another one question here. Talking about population expansion here, that's basically what we're talking about. Besides the businesses, you're moving, going to move some people in here, okay? Maybe two to four thousand extra in population growth, maybe, okay? I mean, I'm just kind of speculating here. What's that going to do? I mean, what, I don't hear nothing about, you know, boosting our police and fire.
Great question.
Okay, I'm living over on the other side of the railroad tracks where we've had numerous problems because of the railroad. I hate to depend on another city if they're busy taking care of their problems, especially when I got Hazel Park in Detroit. Detroit's out the door. I mean, and Hazel Park, yeah, I do see them. But I'd kind of like to know that I can depend on my own police and fire. You know, what's it going to do to build up those departments? Is this going to bring, mean that we're going to get, hopefully get some extra police officers, maybe an extra firefighter or two, and kind of fill the void that's been left since all these budget cuts? Because our police and fire was a lot stronger than what it is today. You know, I don't like depending on somebody else. I like depending on what my tax dollars are paying for. My tax dollars don't pay for Hazel Park in Detroit. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I want to thank you all for your service. We're a great city because of volunteers like, or not volunteers, I know the pay's not very good, and you put a lot of work in, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
However, my name's Dave Nicholson, 310 West Saratoga. And you want to build a seven, allow seventy-foot buildings to be tall, built behind my house? I got here the Central Business District zoning regulations for Royal Oak. All buildings or portions of buildings on lot immediately adjacent to a residentially zoned parcel, not separated by any street, alley, or other right-of-way, or separated by only an alley, shall be maintained at no greater than thirty feet in height. Now, I've checked a lot of zoning, and, you know, it's kind of tough going through all that, and I can't be exactly sure of what I'm reading. But basically, what I'm seeing here is Detroit's thirty-five feet, when you're talking about being eighteen feet away from single-family, small-lot residential areas. Thirty-five feet, Pleasant Birmingham's three stories, Pleasant Ridge says forty feet, A lot of what you'll see is one, one foot of setback for one foot of heights. I was wondering, Justin, could you put the zoning map up so we can, I can actually see that also, and talk about that? So you can see there that every other residential area, except Saratoga Street, is, gets protected by the urban flex zone. We, somehow, for some reason, we don't get that. We get 70-foot buildings. And again, this is out of scale. Here's what I wrote earlier. "There are reasons that other communities have zoning laws that largely reflect the same values, and one of the reasons is because when you start building grossly oversized buildings too close to residential neighborhoods, you destabilize those neighborhoods, leading to, excuse me, among other negative effects, declines in property values." 70, that's what everyone, no one else, I mean, I'd be happy to see you guys come up and say, oh, this city will allow something somewhere close to that, but this is two, two and a half times taller than Royal Oak would, I'm sorry, Royal Oak would allow. Get a little emotional.
It's okay.
And again, look at that, look at the map. It's right there. Everybody else gets protected. Our street, we get 70-foot, out of scale. It's going to destroy our property values. I know this was done before you guys were here, but this is wrong. This is out of scale. Here's my last little... And I don't, you know, again, I appreciate what you guys have done, or are doing and everything. But what you're proposing here is reckless and far out of the main street. It does not reflect the values of the surrounding communities, nor does it, in my opinion, reflect Ferndale's values. Ferndale is a progressive city, and you like to cast your downtown plans as progressive, but I doubt that many of our residents would be think that shoving obscenely out-of-scale buildings, buildings that will threaten the integrity of neighborhoods and property values, down the throats of those living nearby, would be considered progressive. There's lots of other places you can build this stuff, you know? Como's, there's, there's better opportunities for this than, than our street. We deserve the protection of the flex zone at the very, you know, I would like to see 30, 40 feet. That's, that's what it should be, to reflect what the rest of the communities have. And if I'm wrong about that, I'd love to see some, I was going to, my original plan was to come up here, wave a $100 bill around and say, I'll give $100 if someone could show me similar zoning to what you're doing here. And then make a big show of, oh, I think it's safe, but whatever, you know? This isn't right. Thank you, and to thank you again, all of you, for your service.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, again.
Good evening, Bernie Fraser, 346 West Saratoga. I had a few questions. One, I wanted to know if there was a notice mailed out to the residents for this public hearing? I think that's required under the city ordinance to get that 15 days prior to the public hearing. I know I did not receive anything, and I don't believe my other residents received it as well. So I don't...
Can you address that?
So it's a little different than the DOT situation, where it's a specific site where you mail everyone, and that, in that instance, we did, I think, like at least 500 feet. But, so, for ordinance updates, for something like this, that covers off a wide area like this, it's, it's a notice in the paper, notice in City Hall, or outside of City Hall as well, so it's not mailed specifically to certain residents.
Was there a notice in the paper?
Yeah.
So doesn't, doesn't it, if you're changing the ordinance, doesn't it fall under the Michigan State, under your ordinance, it falls under the Michigan State Zoning Enablement Act, which you're pretty much word, word for word, that any change, you have to give anyone living within 300 feet of the said ordinance, a 15-day written notice by mail, US Postal Service.
Hank, excuse me, are you familiar with that, Dan?
I am, I believe that's if it's less than...
I have the ordinance here.
Hang on.
Less than 10 lots, I believe, is what that, the other part of that language reads. But what section?
Sorry, I'm getting old. It's in the General Provisions, Article 1, Notice of Public 125.3103, Notice of Public Hearing. It's the same wording in the City of Ferndale ordinance as well. That was just my first question.
So Dan, yeah, we won't put you on the spot right now to find that out. Dan, I guess if we, if, if we find out that we were in error, we could do this again in, in a better way, but that's the advice we had gotten from council previously, so...
Oh, that's fine, I just...
Yep, Dan, and I'm not expecting you to...
No, no, I'll get the answer.
Practice well, on the spot.
The second question kind of follows along, you know, what Dave was saying, you know, I live, obviously, right behind, we're, we're the only street on the sub-district map here that can have a 70-foot building. Now, I know for myself, because of the parking garage, that's, that's already for a gone conclusion, that we're going to have something over, you know, at least it's going to be 48 feet, I believe, behind my house. But as you go down that road, those are all residences, and I guess I don't understand why everywhere else in the City of Ferndale, you have this flex zone, but yet on our street, we do not have that, and I don't know the rationale for that. I'm assuming the reason we're going to the cookie cutter, getting away, getting away from the cookie cutter approach, and getting to a standardized approach, is because that's also within the state of Michigan code, coding to have a standardized, you have to have standardized zoning in a, in a downtown area. And if that's somewhat having equality or standardization, I think that we should have that as well, you know, where our, our residence is going to have that same flex, or at least that same, you know, consistent, equal, you know, zoning around our houses as everyone else does in Ferndale. You know, I don't know if I'm wrong in that, or, you know, it just seems, it seems like it's out of place that our street is the only street that will allow 70-foot buildings behind our houses. You know, where everyone else in the City of Ferndale has the ability, at least get to 55 feet, you know, it might not seem much, but when you're barbecuing back there, it's a big deal.
Thank you.
So that was the last thing, yeah, the setback I didn't have, that was kind of a question as you were talking about that. How would that affect the behind where our alleyway is? What would that setback be? I guess I was a little unclear about that. I mean, obviously, this doesn't affect me as much because we're going to have the garage behind my house, but I know my neighbors are quite concerned. Thank you again.
Sure, sure. So, we talked a lot, I mean specifically, about this street as part of the DOT process and through the master plan, but, and through this, or more recent conversation. And so, we had recommended 70 on that feet, primarily because that's what it was at this point, or since 2010, I should say. But also, we felt that that is, that was vetted through the DOT process, and that the alley there, I believe it's 18 feet wide, so it's a little bit wider than some of the other alleys. And the thinking was that, so on top of this 18-foot alley, you would also have an additional 10 feet from that, so then you're 28 feet separated from the garages that are on, on the other side, the south side of the alley, I guess. So it seemed as though that was more of a downtown type of street than some of the other spots throughout the city, but, so that was part of the recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Justin. Anyone else that would like to address council during this public hearing? All right, seeing none. I'll close the public hearing portion, and now this is council's opportunity to, first of all, ask questions of clarification, and then before we get into a discussion, there would need to be a motion. Are there any questions?
So, I do have a question. Um, Justin, regarding West Saratoga, and you might have said that, might have said this, never, might have missed it, but why does it stop at West, why, why, why is it, the area that was picked, why was that area picked? I think we'll need some clarity regarding that.
The purple area on West Troy?
Yes.
So that was, that was vetted throughout the DOT process, but also thinking that there was a wider alley there as well, so some of the stuff I just mentioned, but it seemed more to be a downtown-type street in the core, closer to Woodward. Proximity to Woodward was actually a big portion of that decision. And part of why we stopped on the east Nine Mile side at Bermuda, and essentially in the library. So it seemed that proximity to Woodward was important, if you're going to have, if you're trying to incentivize inclusive housing and incentivize density near where transit would be, so you're very walkable to, to smart bus stops and where, you know, there could be future transit, but, you know, that was, you know, element number five, I guess, on the list of all the reasoning.
And were there other areas as far, where we could have researched?
So, they, they weren't able to attend tonight, but Smith Group, JGR, and LSL Planning, they also helped put together the ordinance. And so their research, in addition to staff's research, looked at Royal Oak, Birmingham, Saginaw, Lansing, kind of all other communities that are looking for ordinance updates like this. And so that's, those were all a factor in why we chose to stick with 70 at that site, feeling that the setback was even more pronounced than, than what the DOT was. It seemed like there was more protection to the adjacent residents to the south.
May I ask a follow-up question on that?
Sure, it may be the same.
Yeah, on the east side, though, I can see how it could be downtown core as well, since there's already a 7-foot building there with the Credit Union one, so half of it already is, meets the downtown core standard that we're discussing. So really, the library and City Hall is the piece in the middle that doesn't meet it. So I'm having a hard time understanding the decision to make that urban flex.
Rather than...
The downtown core, when half of it already meets it.
Then going up, yeah. We talked a lot about that, too. The last iteration had just a City Hall being in the downtown core, and the planning commission's, I think, recommendation, and Councilman Martin might remember, was that we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want to send, I mean, we didn't think that that needed to be 70 feet there, but...
Even though half of it already is.
Right. I can see that. I think that was our original argument.
Well, and there's consistency in the argument on both sides, is where I think we eventually landed. If you talk about the, you know, the west side, you've got the bedding that happened in the DOT process, and this discussion of that height with the increased setback was kind of already had placed and decided with the plans for the DOT. And then when you get to the east side, it was still fairly consistent. When we looked at, you know, we looked at that piece of it, we just didn't see the necessity overall to have that whole strip, you know, reflect that, so...
And I think related...
I mean, I think there's an argument either way, I know where you're going with that.
Would it limit future development on the Credit Union one site? I don't know why they would take the building down, but if they did, they wouldn't be able to replace it at the same height.
Right, it would have to be...
Or, yeah, if they wanted to redevelop the parking deck, so it had office or residential on it.
They couldn't.
They couldn't.
Right.
Yeah, part of the thinking was that across from north of Credit Union one, that's development, I believe, is 50 or 55 feet.
I was just about to say that, yeah.
Yeah, and so it felt like that was the appropriate height for that.
But, I'm sorry, through the chair, you're, you could argue that with the DOT. I mean, the DOT is going to be 55 feet, you know, so why are you not treating Troy the same way? And I think that's some of their argument.
Well, the DOT, to clarify, the DOT, the residential proposed portion, parcel B, that is 55, but the rest of that, I guess, front portion of that is 65 feet.
65, okay.
So it does drop down back where the parking area is, yeah.
I mean, I mean, the way that I read this regulation is that the planning commission does have the flexibility, if it is urban flex, to go up to 70 if the right conditions are met.
Correct.
So there is an opportunity to do that, so, but is that enough? That's, I guess, my policy question.
I mean, for discussion purposes, to me, I think it is, because again, you've got other levers to pull. And again, part of the intent of this is to adequately set expectations of people looking to build, and I would want those extra exceptions pre-baked into that discussion when they came to us, if they asked us for something, for 10, that 10 more feet. I want them to know our expectation is fair housing in Lead, or fair housing in, or affordable housing and, and, and public parking, so. I like that cap on it personally, but...
Can I ask another question? In the bonus height area, are any of those adjacent to residential? No, right? I mean, I don't think so, based on...
No, they're pretty much separated by public parking of some sort, most of those, I would say.
That's my guess, looking at that map.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, we wanted to keep it Woodward, Woodward-facing, or at least the corner.
Basically Woodward, yep.
I have a couple of questions through the chair. The bonus height of 10 feet, I guess, pretty predominantly on Woodward. Councilman Martin, you had said that the one requirement is that they have to provide 25% affordable housing. What if someone wanted to build an office building that was 80 feet? Well, they're not going to add residential to it, so you could never have an 80-foot office building, is essentially what we're saying.
Right, right, right.
Yep.
And we were comfortable saying that.
Okay, I'm just, just getting it out there, clarification.
Yep.
Yeah, correct.
The other thing is, clarification, if, I was understanding, having gone through this for now the last year, is the core downtown, they try to align with the TIF, the DDA TIF area, and that's why Troy Street has always been part of that core downtown. A lot of, you know, and that was established in 2001, when they decided that was going to be part of the downtown DDA TIF area. So I understand why it's always been included in all of these conversations, because we've tried to be consistent with, if it's part of the TIF area, we're going to treat it as part of the downtown area.
That's a great point.
Or the downtown core, I should say. The other thing I want to be clear on is, so on Troy Street, West Troy Street, we basically have, after the DOT is built, we basically have the Business Solutions Building, One-Eyed Betties, and the city parking lot, that someone would have to consume all of those properties in order to build something a maximum of 70 feet. I think it would be difficult for someone to build a 70-foot story on One-Eyed Betties lot. I just, I couldn't see that. And the other lot is the, the post office, which is owned by the government, and they tend to not sell anything.
Yeah, those are great points. I think, yeah, and I think if, so if someone were to try and develop one of those lots and wanted to try and work with the city, that, that would be a much larger public engagement process, probably goes through the exact same thing that the DOT went through, so...
Absolutely.
You know, just because you're allowed 70 there, doesn't mean you would get that. The site just might not support it.
I have a couple of questions unrelated to height. Are we, may I ask, can I move on to a different...
Question, yes, any questions? Funny, it's not comments and thoughts of that nature.
So I, I think I heard you correctly say, will this mitigate large fronting parking deck walls in our right-of-way, so the pedestrian experience? So I think what we've learned over the last two years with some of the new developments coming in, is that our regulations were unclear or not as prescriptive to meet the standards of what we're looking for. And so, like the Ferndale House, I think you all know how I feel about first-floor parking in a pedestrian environment. I don't like it. So how do we mitigate it? And so, but our standards weren't clear enough, and so this is helping address that. I go back to the TOD overlay zone, that was because a property where the Camborn shops were five years ago was positioned to have multiple stories, and then it was only one story, and that was not what the city wanted, so we created the TOD overlay zone. And now this zoning update that you are providing here sort of brings it all together, and makes it more concise, not only for the property owners and developers, but sets standards for design that I think all of us here are making sure fits the character of Ferndale. And so I think at the end of the day, that this is important for me, that this solves that problem. I also wanted to talk about amenity zones. I know that it's deeper here into the ordinance update, but the amenity zone... for design that I think all of us here are making sure fits the character of Ferndale. And so I think at the end of the day, that this is important for me, that this solves that problem. I also wanted to talk about amenity zones. I know that it's deeper here into the ordinance update, but the amenity zones is where a property owner or developer is going to put landscaping and flowers, landscaping, green, stormwater infrastructure in the amenity zone. And are they required to maintain that if it's in the public right-of-way? And so I was a little concerned. I know that's down the road, maintenance costs, but who's responsible? The property owner or...
No, that's a good point. That's a, that's a great question. I mean, my initial thought is that it would be something we would have to maintain, or there would be some sort of licensing agreement that we could require. I'm not looking at city attorney to see.
Talking about outside of the right-of-way?
It's a diagram here. It's very clear. I can't remember what page it is. Yes, page 29?
Of 183, so I'm not...
Oh, that's your full packet.
Yeah.
Sure. So if someone wanted to replace a, or add a bench out in front of their business in between, in between the, you know, parking and the sidewalk...
Page 16 of the amendment.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
16.
So something like a rain garden or tree planting. Typically, we would, we would maintain that, but...
So we're asking them to install it, and then over time, we would maintain it.
Right.
I think that we need to take a look at how do we do a partnership with a property owner to help offset the costs of maintaining a more demanding downtown environment with more landscaping. So that's one question. And then can you explain the difference between the preliminary plan discussion meeting with the PC and the TOD overlay pre-application meeting?
Sure.
And I know, what's the difference between those two?
Yeah, absolutely.
And how are we consolidating some of the meetings that, you know, the process? You're making it less onerous for property owners and developers to go through, and so can you explain the difference?
Sure. Absolutely. The preliminary planning commission discussion is something that staff's been doing for the past couple of years now, and this really is just formalizing that. So we always, anytime there's kind of a bigger development, that, you know, maybe a project doesn't have really full drawn-out site plans, and they want to just do, show a concept to the planning commission, get their initial feedback before diving into engineering and all those things. And so this really is something we always offer for bigger projects. And now it's just in the ordinance as, just clarifying what is required for that sort of thing. We needed some parameters for that. The transit overlay district application meeting, pre-application meeting, so right now, any project in the downtown that is changing a facade, adding new windows, or is just, you know, a brand-new development where the whole thing needs to be reviewed, the DDA director, CED director, and then a representative from the downtown businesses meet in advance and talk about, you know, does this meet the character of downtown? And they can kind of get some more feedback that way. And it keeps the DDA involved in the process, because they don't really get much, to get to give much direction when a project goes to the planning commission. And so the DDA appearance review that happens now is in a separate ordinance. This clarifies and puts this in the site plan review ordinance. And it's, you know, a checkbox that will be added to our site plan review applications, even though it's something we recommend now. So it doesn't really change much other than putting it in the right portion of the ordinance.
All right. And if I may, I have another question. Page 16, it references, again, street, oh, gosh, hang on, let me find it. I discussed it with you earlier. The, it references street furniture and that the city needs to follow...
The DDA streetscape design?
Yeah, the, here it is, page 17. It says, "Street furniture shall be well-integrated in the streetscape design and have a durable, practical, and appealing design that meets the DDA streetscape design guidelines," which I had to go look and find. They're from 2013, and so a lot of the processes in here that are articulated no longer apply, and so I recommend that this be set as a priority or figured out how to integrate into the plan, because if anybody wants to take a look.
Oh, I found it, yeah.
So it talks about what can and cannot go in the amenity zone.
No.
Right? And what it should look like. And then finally, my last question is, the red highlights about bicycle parking signage and what you're asking more developers to do by increasing the number of parking, what problem are we trying to solve?
Mostly just clarity on site plans. So we've, I would say the site plans we received over the past two years have greatly improved upon detail and things like that, but really, I would say, a lot of times, I, these are additional things I have to ask for. They're required by ordinance as part of, like, parking requirements, things like that. But this just really says, okay, I'm going to give you a site plan that has my 10 required parking spaces and my 10 required bike parking spaces on the plan, rather than, oh, yeah, we'll just put bike parking somewhere. So this really just nails it home that another, another spot where they can see this when they're submitting their site plan. So it's not really new, just, just easier to find on a site plan and improve some of the things we've been getting over the years.
I think that satisfies my questions at this time.
Other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. One more. What is the opportunity to provide rooftop patios, bars, or clubs on top of, the top of the floor of a new building? Are those permitted, or would be a special consideration under anybody bringing them forward?
They'd be special considerations, really. They've, they've kind of, the ones that have been proposed have fallen within our, I think it's the height restriction section of the ordinance where penthouses are talked about. And so, so there is that opportunity, but it also requires more scrutiny in the planning commission and in site plan review, and...
In fact, the most recent I think of didn't actually come to fruition, right?
Right.
Great. Well, I guess what I'm trying to sort of mitigate is sort of the downtown Royal Oak example, where there's a residential living building, and then across from it is a rooftop bar that is incompatible...
Right.
...to sound sleeping and happy residence. And so I want to make sure that we don't create a situation where that even has the remote chance of happening.
Will do.
No parties on the top of the roofs that are like weddings and whatever.
All right. So what is the pleasure of council?
Mayor, if I could, on that earlier issue...
Yeah, oh, sure.
That was raised by the resident. The actual section that addresses zoning ordinance amendments of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act is section 125.3202. And subpart two, specific, subpart two and subpart three specifically talks where there's a zoning amendment that addresses more adjacent properties than 10. The notice provision of 103 requiring specific notice to each resident is not required. It is only the mailed notice, excuse me, not the mailed, but the published notice to the newspaper that's required. And so that's, that was complied with, as Mr. Lyons indicated.
Okay.
And so the individual notice is not required for that type of amendment.
Thank you.
I'd move city council approve the amendment to Article 4, Commercial and Office Districts, as summarized below, with the following findings as listed in the packet.
Is there support? Is there support?
I support.
It has been moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Now, discussion.
If I may, through the chair, I'm a little concerned with East Nine Mile and the fact that it is identified urban flex. I'm concerned that over time, we're going to see townhouses with, you know, three- or four-foot lawns in front of them, you know, on Nine Mile, because those are permitted. And I just don't think that warrants. I would, I'd really like to see zero lot line development, you know, along Nine Mile, at least up to Paxton. To me, that allows for better continuous flow of traffic, allowing foot traffic to continue. Once you get into specific residential, your flow of traffic is limited, and so those businesses east of Paxton then don't get the foot traffic, much like they don't do now. And I was really thinking that the development that we want to do on East Nine Mile, similar to what we have on West Nine Mile, would encourage, you know, foot traffic to continue further beyond Paxton for those other businesses. So I do have that concern moving forward.
Other thoughts or comments?
Actually, I do have, Attorney Chris, thank you for finding, clarifying that ordinance. And whereas to, I can appreciate that, I still think, and this is kind of where I've been going in my head throughout this whole process, I still think that even though it wasn't required of us to notify, I think it's something that we could have done, because this is going to affect a lot of people, which is why I'm on the fence regarding supporting it, because I don't think, I just, I've always believed in engage in the community regarding situations that will affect them, and I just don't think there's enough of you here right now to effectively gauge this decision. So that's where I'm at right now.
And I would just say, I respect that opinion, and this, because council has always tried to get the maximum amount of public input above and beyond what is normally required. I was impressed, I'm not an expert on form-based code, but I was impressed by how many people in public meetings that were notified, you know, that were noticed, the planning commission, the DDA, the DDA appearance, I mean, this has been a very long process, and so we didn't give that instruction to staff to exceed the legal requirements. I guess we could have. I mean, I'm sensitive to what you're saying, because I think it's important to have that kind of input. And for me, in this, in this instance, I think there's been enough meetings and conversations. The master plan included discussions around this as well. And I realize everyone doesn't follow all of that stuff, but there's only so much we can do, and there's a number of issues that people wish we would mail them notifications about, and I'm not sure we have the funds to do that, so...
If I may, through the chair, I'd also emphasize that underlying all of these are these individual meetings and planning commission sessions and town halls where notices did go out for the DOT, the East Nine Development Ferndale House, where people have been noticed, and the feedback from those, those public sessions over the last two to three years have very much been incorporated into the recommendations. In fact, if anything, it drove us to draw up this ordinance, to provide some guidance, because to a degree, it was all over the place. And I remember wasting a lot of time with developers who brought things to the table that were just never going to fly.
Yeah.
And we can head a lot of that off on the front end. You know, I agree. I think I'm sensitive to public notice, and I want to be as transparent as possible. I agree with the mayor that in this case, I think we've, I don't know what we haven't heard that we would, I guess, is what I would say.
I'd like to reinforce sort of what Councilman Martin has said. You know, the master planning process is the policy envisioned for where your city wants to go, and that was almost a two-year process with significant outreach. And then your zoning ordinance are the laws and regulations to enable what you visioned to actually be built. And so I think this is, and that the developers follow what we're asking of them. And I think that this gets us definitely more of encouraging of what we want to have happen and be clear on what it means, and it definitely is very clear on what we don't want. And I feel like we have heard a lot of feedback from folks. Doesn't mean that we will always get it 100% right. It is a negotiation, but we have a better toolset now in order to negotiate for the things and not get, like, why did that happen? So I think it is definitely helps us meet the character and function of our downtown, definitely makes it more clear for property owners and developers, and makes it more cohesive. So I'm with, I'm with you that this has been a four-year process, almost, I would say? Are we at four?
Yeah.
Year four of getting this in place? But, you know, this isn't a set it and forget it, right? We have tweaked our zoning ordinance, I think, every year or every other year, based off of demand and need and responding to changing environments, which we are definitely in. And so I think the planning, and I'd also like to thank the planning commission, because they are volunteer residents who are helping put this in place.
They really don't get paid.
And they don't get paid at all. And I know how much time, their meetings go longer than city council.
Yeah.
Because the care and thought that they put in it to make sure that it's meeting the residents' needs is spot-on, because it impacts them as well.
And on that point, I guess I do want to just speak to the overall, general intent of this, because I really do appreciate it. Again, I'm not an expert in form-based codes, and I've learned a lot from my colleagues and this process, but I know that we've been frustrated here as a council in that our zoning ordinance restricts the type of building, but it doesn't, it doesn't restrict what it looks like. And we've had a lot of conversations up here of, can we make them do this? Can we have it look like this? We don't want it to look like this. And we just didn't have that flexibility. And so while I don't agree with, you know, every line in here, I think that it's a monumental effort to move us to a point where we can now take more control over the way our downtown looks and grows, and that it's a big, a big step in that process. So I applaud the work of lots of other folks that went into it, and I'm supportive. Other comments and questions? All right. Hearing none, we have a motion and a support. So, Martin, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor President Pollock?
Yes, with explanation.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coltrane?
Yes.
Through the chair. I'm voting yes. I do support the plan. Again, I just want to reiterate, so it's on record for the planning commission, that as developments come through for East Nine Mile, I would like them to seriously consider the density part of those projects. So, thank you.
All right. Next, I'd like to move that city council approve the amendment to Article 11, General Provision, Section 24-191. Landscaping is summarized below with the following findings as found in the packet.
Is there support?
Support.
There's actually three motions required to adopt the, is that right? Is that correct? Is it three?
No, it's three.
Yeah, there's three motions to adopt all the portions of this.
I do have a question about this. With this general provision landscaping, there's a lot of overlap here with the vegetation ordinance, and so I was wondering if you can, because that's on discussion for later.
Sure.
I was wondering if you could talk about how this impacts that?
Sure. So they're certainly connected, but not, I wouldn't say tied 100% together. So we saw an opportunity with certain developers, developments that really can't provide the required amount of trees on site. We've had sort of a policy about payment and lieu. This requires that. This also update takes out the prohibited species list, because it changes so, like, it could change from time to time, so...
Was it listed in here, too, under the landscaping one?
It's not now.
Oh, but it was listed in both?
Right.
Okay, so you removed it as well. Okay.
Right.
That's a future discussion in 10 minutes.
Right. And then the screening section was updated, because we've just had some needs, changes as far as screening, parking... as far as screening, parking, make sure that the light spill over doesn't, you know, go into people's yards and things like that. So this clarifies that with some more up-to-date standards and then suggestions for stormwater management.
And can you just go into a little further about the findings of B, the confirm the payment in lieu of trees policy?
Sure.
So if a developer or a property owner wants to remove mature trees, what does this mean?
This is actually just for the addition of trees. So if.
The addition of trees.
Right.
Okay, so the other ordinance addresses that one, right? I'm looking at our sustainability planner.
Yes, that's, yes, yes. That's clarified in there.
Okay.
This has happened with a lot of downtown projects recently where there just simply isn't the space to add the trees, so they're required to put them throughout the city elsewhere.
I like that.
Or actually downtown, I should say.
I support that. Okay, thank you.
All right, other comments or questions? Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you.
Lastly, I'd like to move City Council approve the amendment for Article 11, Site Plan Review is summarized below with the findings as listed in the packet.
Is there support?
I support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Is there discussion?
Overall, I think that the site plan review process has definitely been smoothed out, particularly with the, you know, the additional steps of going through the DDA design review process, which was very helpful in making sure we got what we got out of developers to do what we wanted. But this actually goes a step further, so I like that. Can you talk a little about the expansion modifications to the existing building, which is Point A?
Sure. We were fortunate enough that our consultant that helped work on the ordinance is part of the redevelopment-ready communities team at the MEDC. And so that was in response to that, in response to what she's seen in some other ordinances. And Planning Commission recently had kind of said, you know, they saw a couple of projects where they were like, why are we even seeing this? And so we had to point out, well, because of the square footage and percentages requirements, this is required to come to the Planning Commission. And so they had suggested giving staff a little bit more administrative approval. So we were thankful of that.
Okay. And then, can you sort of explain D? To confirm CED staff will provide a site plan approval letter? What does this help your team achieve?
Just mostly clarifies the process. You know, I think a few years ago, there weren't as many site plans coming through. And so it was a little bit less structured. And this just really clarifies what the developer can also expect to receive after they've had their site plan reviewed. So it's things we do anyway, but just making sure that, you know, if we are all no longer on the team for some reason in the future, then this continues on with other people. Because it should, I mean, this is really just basic for most cities, or should be, I think.
All right, further comments or questions? All right, Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pollocka?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you.
And thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item of business is the consent agenda. These are items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless council removes something from the consent agenda. So let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the March 26 Regular and Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes. Item B is the adoption of a resolution proclaiming April 2018 as Fair Housing Month in Ferndale. Item C is the adoption of a resolution honoring Ann Heller on her completion of service to the Ferndale Housing Commission and completion of two hours of a council meeting, too. Thank you, Ann. Item D is the approval of the purchase and installation of the DPW Surveillance System Update, I don't know how to pronounce that, security solution by DA Central in the amount of $20,404.41 from the account number listed on the agenda. Item E is the approval to provide written notice to Enterprise revoking any prior authorized signers and to adopt the Motor Vehicle Lease Corporate Resolution with Enterprise Fleet Management authorizing interim DPW Director Carlos Kennedy, Finance Director Cheryl Stubblefield, and Assistant City Manager Joe Gaochow to execute motor vehicle lease on behalf of the City of Ferndale. Item F is the approval to allocate $13,250 to improve the Ferndale Historical Museum parking lot. Item G is the approval of the 2018 Local Road Improvement Program Application for the Proposed Pharaoh Street Resurfacing. Item H is the approval of a special event permit for the First Annual Garlic and Music Festival to be held on June 15, 16, and 17, 2018 and authorize the mayor to sign the license agreement. Item I is the approval to rescind objections to liquor license for renewals for BBQ, Barbecue Strikers LLC, and Eleven Mile Brewery, Inc. Item J is the approval to purchase Speed Queen Commercial Heavy Duty Washer and Dryer from a dependable Maytag for a total of $2,998 installed to be paid from the Fire Department's Facility Maintenance Account. Item K is the approval of the Enterprise Lease of a new Chevy Tahoe Police 4x4 at a cost of $45,000 over a five-year term and the necessary modifications to fully equip the unit as an emergency vehicle to be paid from the Fire Department's Vehicle Lease Account. Item L is the approval to amend the March 26, 2018 Motion to Purchase a Vector Truck to Include Finance Details as Recommended by City Attorney to Allow the City Clerk, Mayor, or other appropriate staff to sign paperwork needed to finance the 2016 Vector for six years at $60,227.59 at 3.9% interest for a total amount financed of $329,105 to be charged to the Water Sewer Fund. Item M is the approval to fill the Project Manager position in the Department of Public Works. Item N is the approval of a partnership agreement between the Parks and Rec Department and the FIT Park for the Fusion Festival Event, contingent upon City Attorney approval of the contract and authorization for Parks and Rec Director Wheeler to sign the contract. And finally, item O is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by our City Manager's Office, subject to the review of the Council Finance Committee. What is council's pleasure on that this evening?
Your honor, I have two resolutions I'd like to read in for the life of me. I can't remember if we do that before or after the vote. So whatever's appropriate.
We do it before the vote, but after we have a motion and for the consent agenda. Sorry, I need to, oh, yeah.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved by Leaks May and supported by Pollocka to accept the consent agenda. Councilman Martin?
Thank you. The first resolution I'd like to read is related to item B, which is the resolution declaring April 2018 as Fair Housing Month in Ferndale, Michigan. And it reads, this April has been declared a fair housing month in recognition to the 50th anniversary of the signing of the Federal Fair Housing Act. And this landmark law, along with other federal and state legislation, strictly prohibits housing discrimination based on sex, color, race, age, religion, national origin, disability, family or marital status. And that Fair Housing Month is dedicated to heighten people's awareness of their rights under the law when pursuing the purchase or rental of housing. And all citizens are entitled to freedom of choice in the selection of housing and are guaranteed certain protections under the law if they are victims of discrimination. Therefore, David Colter, Mayor of the City of Ferndale, do hereby proclaim April as Fair Housing Month in Ferndale.
Wonderful.
And secondly, and a little bit more fun, I want to read the proclamation honoring Ann Heller with a little bit of an introduction. About three years ago now, I made a phone call to Ann about issues and opportunities at the Housing Commission. And to her credit, I said, we're going to go in there and we'll work on this. And she said, yes, didn't even blink an eye. And then two months later, she was running the joint. So really, at the most difficult time in one of our most important city agencies, as usual, Ann stepped up and took the bull by the horns and did a wonderful job. So let me read this. And it talks about some of Ann's other accomplishments as well. Mayor Dave Colter, on behalf of Ferndale City Council, extends the city's congratulations to Ann Heller on her completion of service with the Ferndale Housing Commission. Ann Heller has dedicated her life to helping others. Her career as an educator spans decades and includes work in the Detroit Public Schools and Wayne RESA. Ann has authored resource packets and enriched curriculum for exceptional children and has received many awards for her work, including ARC's Michigan Teacher of the Year. She's a recipient of the SOAR Optimists Ruby Award in recognition of her work improving the lives of women. And in 2015, was named Wonder Woman by the One Foundation for Having Improved Quality of Life in Southeast Michigan through civic, philanthropic, and professional accomplishments. She is a founding member and president of the Ferndale Free Clinic, which offers medical services to people without insurance, and has been appointed to a variety of state, regional, and city boards, including MDE Special Ed Rules and Guidelines Revision Committee, Community Media Network Board, the Ferndale Human Rights Ordinance Study Committee, and served five years as Chair of the Ferndale Housing Commission, five years, not three, sorry, during the most difficult time, I would say, in the Commission's history. Ann Heller is a credit to the community and it is with heartfelt appreciation that we celebrate her achievement.
Thank you, Ann. Do you want to say any, do you want to? It's rare that Ann doesn't want to say a word. And we love to hear from you, dear.
I don't think you've done enough for the community.
I know, I've got to step up.
Are you going to step, yeah, step up.
Get over my shyness. I promise you. First of all, I have to say, thank you, thank you. I was honored to be asked to work on the Housing Commission. And I have to say now, as I leave, everyone, everyone has to be assured with this board that is currently in place, the executive director that we have hired, the residential committees that have just begun to blossom and do so much. It's in good hands. It's in excellent hands. So feel really, really proud. And especially now with Housing Commission working more and more with the city, working more and more with the county. This can only help in the work that we're doing around affordable housing here in Ferndale. We're absolutely, Housing Commission is absolutely a partner in that, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, feel good, feel good about what you've done.
We'll take a picture so we can brag on you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Ooh, can I photobomb?
I know. Always.
Did you just take that award from her?
I'm going to, I'm going to the Housing.
Yes, he did.
Yes, and it's all mine, no. I'm taking it with me to the Housing Commission on Wednesday to present it in front of the residents she's worked so wonderfully for, and the Commission and the executive director, who wanted to be here tonight but couldn't, so. Excellent, this is a to-be continued.
Anything else on the consent agenda? If not, Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pollocka?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
I'm sorry, we're.
Well, on the consent.
Okay, should, I did have a question regarding it, so answer it after the motion.
What should we do, Dan?
It's just a basic question. It's just a basic, yes.
Let's pause the roll call.
Yes. Okay, so I believe it is item number D for the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah.
So.
The Surveillance System?
Yes. So I just had a question regarding that, I guess, to you, Joe. Now, I know that a while back, there were some, I know now that everybody's, everything's, the purpose of this is for everything to kind of be in alignment with.
Yes.
And I know that we had, a while back, we had some problems with some glitches as far as the water bill, et cetera. Will this alleviate those problems, or can we?
This is actually separate from that. We did actually update the water pump station, access control and surveillance a couple of years ago. We had the intent to do the water pump station and some of the outer DPW-related buildings. And now this year, the DPW is scheduled to get an access control update. And that's what this is.
Okay.
So the DPW's yard system is just in a significant need of updating.
That was a question harmless.
Okay. But let's start the roll call over since there's new information that's been presented.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pollocka?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Our first item of business is the confirmation of the appointment of Ross Sandilis to the Beautification Commission for a term ending December 31, 2018. Just till the end of this year, huh? It's a partial term?
Yeah. Filling in a vacancy, says liaison to the Beautification Commission. Ross came in as a recommendation from the board. Is Ross here?
He was not available tonight.
Okay. And he has got some tremendous experience. He's a Ferndale homeowner. He's been involved with the community garden as well as being an avid technologically-minded person with dealing with video and graphic design, which, as you know, the Beautification Committee's work, they do a lot of presenting and showing off some of the houses around town. So he's going to make a solid addition to this group and the Commission asks us to approve his appointment.
Excellent. And I would just add, this is a mayoral appointment with the approval of council. But as usual, I rely on the Commission for guidance and advice and I certainly support the recommendation. And so, was that a motion, Councilman Martin?
It absolutely is a motion.
Okay. Okay. Second. By Martin and supported by Pollocka. Further discussion. All right, Marnie, would you call the roll?
Mayor President Pollocka?
Yes.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Porter.
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted and appreciate the service. Item B is a consideration to accept and receive the draft fiscal year 2019-2021 budget for review in preparation for a formal adoption on May 23rd, 2018, April.
Yes. This is just a formal way to start the process of our budget approval. We will actually have a public hearing next week, or at the next council meeting on April 23rd. But according to charter, a council has to receive and receive a copy of the budget at the first meeting in April. So that is what we have here before you today. For those that are interested in hearing more about the budget, we're seeing that we do have hard copies that will be at the library and the clerk, at the front counter in the lobby, as well as they can go online. And then we will be holding a public hearing on the 23rd, of which I'll do a formal presentation to give a summary of the budget. So this is just one meeting and a series of meetings to approve this budget.
We adopt it quickly, but we work on it a long time. So I encourage people to go look at it and you have any question about the finances of Ferndale, it is in there.
I move to accept and receive the draft fiscal year ending 2019 to fiscal year ending 2021 budget for review in preparation for formal adoption on April 23rd, 2018.
Support. Oh, go ahead.
19 or 18? What does it say?
And for adoption in 2013, April 2018. Did he say 19?
No, I said 18.
Oh, okay.
The paper says 19.
Oh, does it?
It should be 2018.
Okay, all right.
So I corrected it without saying anything.
Bye, Pollocka. Who supported it?
Rayland.
All right. Moved by Councilman Mayor Protem Pollocka, supported by Councilwoman Leaks May. Is there discussion? We'll be into the next meeting.
Yes, I will.
All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor President Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Porter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. The next item of business, I'm very excited to introduce, spending other people's money, as they say, a consideration of a wall installation on Fair Street as part of the CN Terminal expansion. Jordan.
Evening, council. Yes, mayor, you are correct. We're building a wall and CN's going to pay for it on Bennett. How often do you get to? You've got to take them when you can get them.
Well, how long you been sitting on that one? Just out of curiosity.
I'm going to say, since I sat in here about 6:45. Thank you, Dan. I'll be here for a few more minutes. So I want to go over very briefly, you have everything in your packet. I do have a few quick changes for you on this, but for the folks at home and in case, for those who aren't packet enthusiasts, essentially what you've got here is the CN Terminal, as you know, has been expanding the terminal here in Ferndale. And as part of that, they entered into what's called a mitigation agreement between the city of Ferndale and Grand Trunk Western, which is CN Rail. As part of that agreement, they gave us an initial payment of $510,000, $550 to fund the construction of a buffer between the terminal and the residents along Bennett and Fair. And the first change I want to point out is that that number in your memo should be $684,000. What I neglected to do was that first $510,000 was an initial down payment. They're going to give us another $173,450 as we incur those expenses. The second change I want to point out to you, so this wall, and we had a community meeting back last summer to get some input from the residents in that area, you know, what do they want to see out of the screen buffer in terms of bang for the buck? Another thing that kind of occurred with this item, which I'm going to frame because it'll probably never happen in my career again, is it came in substantially under budget. So we are going to have essentially about $356,000 after the wall is built to put toward landscaping and other amenities along the barrier. So we're very excited about that. And so what we're going to ask for you tonight to approve.
That's a lot of money.
Indeed, indeed.
It's a lot of landscaping.
A lot of where the discrepancy came in is when we built out, when we bid out, when we had estimates prepared for the wall, it was for a more substantial version of the Duracree paneling that we're going to be using. And so you can certainly spend that much on a wall, but what the model that we are coming back with is allowing, it's still just as high quality as everything else we were looking at, it's a concrete wall, but it came in a lot cheaper than we expected. So the other change that I'm looking at there, the expenditure that I'm going to ask council to consider and approve tonight is purely for the construction and installation of the wall for an amount not to exceed $327,899.38. So that is for the construction of the wall. What I'm going to, and that change is I'm pulling off the design element. I had hoped to have a more fleshed-out concept for you tonight and a more accurate cost. So that's more.
Pulling off the 48, 125.
Correct, correct. So the total request again tonight will be $327,899.38. We're expecting, and I'm being very conservative in this timeline, but by November 1st, we expect to have all this done. So certainly before year-end 2018, what will be coming back before you after this will be not only, we're looking at a custom design that could be fabricated into a certain number of panels into the wall to add some visual relief. We'll come back with landscaping bids. We basically want to get the, we want to get the wall in fabrication now so that they can get it done in time for the end of the year. So the construction company requests that we get the bids approved early on so they can then, you know, now you start the cycle of six to eight weeks of production, et cetera, and then you move into land preparation, obviously, once the weather allows, if it's not going to snow anymore, we can then put in the wall.
And in the meantime, the national government.
Right, exactly. They'll be stationed outside.
Are there questions of clarification?
Yes, I have a question. So I wasn't involved, unfortunately, with the community conversations, the meetings and all that. In the, in deciding what the residents wanted and what we were building the wall for, part of that was for sound. I mean, I know you're not going to eliminate all the sound because it's only a 13-foot wall?
10 feet, sir.
10 feet, okay. I thought it was 13. I thought we had originally agreed on 13.
We did. That's a good point. We looked at, when it came into relocating the utilities, the highest we can go is 10 feet. After a 10-foot wall, you require different equipment to install, and so you'd actually have to get in cranes and lifts. So because of that, we're only getting about an 18-inch easement on CN's property to install the wall. And so there's a lot of practical reasons for that. I mean, obviously, operations of the terminal, locations of utilities. So because of that limitation in terms of the equipment necessary to install the wall, 10 feet is as high as you can go to install it with the equipment that'll allow you to fit within that easement.
Okay, and the residents were aware of this when those conversations were taking place?
That's correct. We sort of, we sort of level set, when we met with the residents, we kind of gave them sort of a universe of what's possible in terms of, you know, we have to go with a concrete wall, we only have so much money, and we're already kind of expecting, at that time, we were expecting that the 684 was going to be barely enough, if enough at all, to do this fully. So what we went for was bang for the buck. You know, obviously, in terms of sound, like you said, councilman, that you're not going to be able to block the sound entirely. One of the things that we're going to do in addition to this concrete wall is go for evergreens as an option, not only for the environmental benefits, but for the additional buffering element on the sound and aesthetics. So we're going to do everything we can within the power of the budget that we have, but you're right, it won't be a total sound buffer. It'll be definitely an aesthetic buffer, but only partially sound.
To clarify, if I may, through the chair, Mayor Colter and I were on that negotiation with the railroad and 13 feet was never part of the agreement. It was an estimate that we got to a dollar amount around. So we're well within our rights to only do 10.
Okay, okay. I'm just, I remember having that conversation of having it 13 feet, so that was stuck in my head. So the other question is, I don't believe, do the, does the packet, doesn't go into detail about where?
It doesn't.
Where the wall is going to be located? So is it going to be all the way from Eight, not Eight Mile, from Bennett to the park? Is it going to run in front of all those buildings?
Essentially, yes, sir. It'll run essentially all along Bennett. If you roughly follow the existing wall line and fence line from Eight Mile, you know, as Bennett kind of kinks up and then aligns with Fair, it'll go just about to Fair Park. One caveat there is where it'll stop is roughly just on the other side of the reopened Camden, which accesses 480 and 450 Fair Street. Those two buildings are still operated by businesses. In the event at such time that CN ever requires those, they have conditions in the mitigation agreement that would be triggered where they issue additional payments of approximately, I believe, $275,000 to extend the wall if those buildings were to ever come down.
Okay.
So, but it'll go up until that point.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the wall, I'm sorry, through the chair, regarding the wall and the fact that you engage with the local artists, was that part of the 48?
Correct. The 48 that you see in your packet, which I'm asking to pull tonight, just because we don't have it fully fleshed out today, that was covering the cost of actually fabricating that design into the panels. One nice thing about this product is that you can basically, they can mold just about anything you want. And so this will be, this concrete and these walls, they come in eight-inch slats, and those are all stained a specific color or they can have the design built in. If you've ever driven on 94 and you've seen the, you know, on the way to the airport, you've seen the leaves that are blue, they have to paint those every couple of years. This you would not have to do. So we walked through the plant in Warren where they make these and, you know, they had walls that were up, you know, 10, 15 years ago and they look brand-new. And so the idea is that that color is stained all the way through. So that 48,000, 10, about 4,300 of it was sort of reserved as a contingency to pay the artist. The rest of it was the cost of fabricating that design and then inserting that into the wall as well.
That's too bad. I like the idea of an artist.
Yeah, we'll be coming back to you with that. Once that's fleshed out, we'll bring that item forward. Yes.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the low bid of $327,899.38 for the construction of the wall. Let's see, do we need to?
And that the city manager?
Okay. And that the city manager be authorized to execute the contract contingent upon city attorney approval of the bonds and insurance. These expenses would be charged to the following account, using funds available from the CN contribution.
All right. It's been moved and supported. Further discussion. I mean, just generally, because I love this and I think that although we've seen increased activity at the terminal, it feels like it's operating as we had hoped. It's further away from the residents. It's as conducive to living near there as we could make it. And is that your, not only your perception, but is that the reaction you're getting from residents there? I am, but I'm just curious what kind of feedback you're getting.
Mayor, I'd certainly say, at least anecdotally, I mean, that's one thing that we actually want to measure, once this wall is in, we're going to kind of pay very close attention to the group that came out to us and provided input. We want to kind of see how they're feeling once the wall's in, go another season. But so far, yes, a lot of, you know, most of the traffic's on Eight Mile, they, part of this project, they expanded their entrance off of Eight Mile Road. So the incentive now is just take 75 and exit south, and then you just enter in right there. And they're actually reconfiguring the signals to make that a lot easier. Yes.
And I think I just want to say that this is the end of a long-term, multi-stage project. And so that this includes the quiet zones, and the feedback I'm getting is that it's quiet and they're very happy and that they're not waking, residents aren't waking up in the middle of the night. And so I just go back to what I've always been saying along, is that this has been a win-win-win for city residents and CN. And so I love that there's extra money here to make almost like a secret garden over here near this wall.
The only limitation, and Councilwoman, I just want to point out, the only limitation that we will have is that the right-of-way will only allow clusters of plants in certain spots. So basically, we will maximize every dollar where we can physically plant things.
As long as it doesn't attract rats?
I'll make a note of that.
And I know that some play equipment, is this, is there, can it be, any of the leftover money be repurposed for any other amenities in this park other than landscaping?
Essentially, the funds are allowed for any sort of beautification improvements, installation or maintenance. So there's a relatively broad allowance for what we want to do there. It'll again, just sort of be limited by, you know, CN does have the right to request reimbursements and so to be a collaborative, we sort of veered away from wall and plants. That might be a conversation. But generally, we have some latitude to be creative, obviously within the physical limitations of the space.
Any further last questions or comments? We have a motion and a support. If not, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor President Pollocka?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Porter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to our next item is a discussion item on the Vegetation Ordinance Update. Before I do that, does council need a five-minute break?
That would be good.
It is our last agenda item.
Call the council and close session. So I'm just saying, we've been at it for two and a half hours. I'm sensing that maybe, yes, we're going recess for five minutes. Thank you for that break.
Yes.
And now let's resume with item nine, which is the discussion item on the Vegetation Ordinance Update. Are you introducing that item?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
So thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
This will be brief, I think, but it's just an overview of the proposed updates to the Chapter 20 Vegetation Ordinance. Kind of what was alluded to earlier is some of the tweaks include, you know, lining up the ordinance with the zoning ordinance for the landscaping for new developments. So basically, just give you a few of those updates, what those updates entail, a brief overview of like the community tree pro- what those updates entail, a brief overview of like, the community tree program that we're kind of trying to figure out, and the upcoming events such as Arbor Day and that sort of thing. So, the main things that are part of this vegetation ordinance updates are the city right to plant the main trees in the right-of-way, specifications that are specific to, you know, trees, and public nuisance regulations for what can be planted and what shouldn't be planted, and proper visual space along right-of-ways, the payment and loop policy that we kind of discussed earlier, and then tree protection and preservation. This just strengthens it in any new developments or redevelopments that happen within the city.
I'm sorry, through the chair, you skipped over tree permits. Could you speak more about that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Tree permits, yeah. So, one of the things that we don't currently have, or kind of loosely have, are tree permits. So really, any trees to be planted in any public space will require those tree permits.
Any public space, not private property?
Any public space.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, any public space. So really, any work that happens in the public space regarding trees will be part of the permit.
Can we ask questions through your presentation?
That's fine with me.
Okay. So, in regards to these tree permits, if I didn't have a tree in front of my house, and I wanted to plant something in the right-of-way, I need to pull a tree permit in order to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's good.
That's something new.
A recommendation, yep. So with every, and that kind of goes into a little bit of the updates to the tree program. So, there's a community tree planting program where residents or community members can request trees to be planted in that space between the sidewalk and the street. And, so with that purchasing, you will also have to fill out this tree permit, acknowledging that every appropriate person at city, at the city knows that this tree is being planted, the type, and if there's any sort of discrepancies on what's proposed to be planted there and the location. And so there's a whole lot of things that I was able to discuss with DPW on what that looks like for kind of unrolling this community tree planting program, along with the update to our ordinance. And it also includes things like, what is the maintenance going to look like? We had a lot of discussions about like, funding concerns, about our tree, our urban tree canopy, and what that's going to entail. And as soon as we have the finalized urban tree canopy study conducted by Davy at the end of July, we'll have a better idea of what that report says and how we can start to reforest our community.
And through the chair, hearing?
Yes.
And kind of opposite of what Mayor Protempolika said, regarding the, a tree being a nuisance, would you have to pull a permit to remove it?
Yes. Yep, so all tree, everything that has to, all things trees will be required on this permit, whether it's a tree trimming, and that proper notice be given to the property owner, if a tree has to be removed, why it's being removed, the causes for it, any anticipation to reforest the urban tree canopy elsewhere because of this removal, all those things will be required for the tree permit, and then the tree program.
I'm referring to the resident, maybe, in front of where the trees are. So is that what you're?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, everything, anything on, on private property, we kind of went back and forth on that with the review committee on what that, what those requirements were. And we stuck with the pri, the public property is where we kind of have these regulations in place. Yep.
Okay.
And the other couple of things I just wanted to give an update on, I've been looking into different funding opportunities, one of which I'm really interested in is the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative. That's due May 11th. So, I've been working with DPW and figuring out what that grant would entail. And it would be a reforestation grant, so it would be for tree plantings. And if that kind of comes through fruition, this is kind of just like a heads-up to expect to see me back to talk about funding opportunities. And then finally, I don't know if you guys have seen this before, probably have, but this is the updated look at our current tree canopy study, with all of the treekeeper benefits on the side. This is up and available currently on our website, and with new communications, it's going to be located in a central location for all things tree-related.
I wonder where industrial area is?
As much as it pains me to say when our mayor Protem has a good idea, a while back, Greg had indicated an idea in some of our parkland about a tree, kind of farm, for lack of a better term, to foster baby trees to hand out to residents if they wanted to plant them on their private property. I'm just throwing it back out there, because it was before you were here, and I actually like that idea, if that's something.
Nursery?
Yeah, we want to tackle at some point, keep it in, you know, for grant opportunities or what have you, keep it.
Sure.
In your head.
If I may, I'm on the Environmental Sustainability Commission, so I've shared a lot of my ideas with.
I'm just giving you.
With our expert staff persons. I tug on her ear a lot.
Definitely. Through the chair, just if I may.
Yes.
So this has been sort of a two-year project to get this ordinance. So, we handed the baton to each other for the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission in January. And so, the FESE had been working on this for quite a while when we'd launched this. And so I just wanted to say thank you to our new sustainability planner, to getting this over the finish line. But really, this was designed to address multiple issues. And I see this coming as sort of a broader package to council, which they're working on with our communications director, that not only did we need to clarify the ordinance of what is allowed and not allowed, and make it up-to-date and more modern, and give flexibility to DPW, but we had to encourage people to plant trees on their private property, and that we had better clarification of what is allowed and not allowed on public property. I had residents say, why did the city come trim my trees? I didn't call for it. And so that, where I learned is, the tree trimming services that the city provides is valuable service, but people didn't have, residents didn't have a place to go and learn about it. And so this is sort of a expansion of education and information about the tree program, as well as just updating the ordinance. And that sort of package is coming at the end of the month on what residents can expect going forward. So I just really appreciate this as well. And there's one clarifying question I had, and it might be more towards Dan Chris, but I've had residents come to me and say that a neighbor's branch from their tree in their yard damaged their house, and was wondering how this ordinance sort of addresses, it wouldn't?
That's a civil matter between those property owners.
Property owners?
This, as well as the existing ordinance, focuses on a imminent hazard or danger to public property.
Okay.
So it doesn't go as far as addressing neighbor disputes regarding trees. And there's a whole body of law that governs that. I mean, people can trim branches that extend into their own yard from the neighbor's tree.
Right. But there's a difference between reporting a nuisance tree and the city addressing that tree in someone's yard versus an event already occurring where a nuisance tree damaged someone's home. Is that where the legal?
No. The focus here on nuisance trees are those trees where there's opposed danger to the public property.
Only public property, but not, okay. So, this ordinance wouldn't address or solve?
Not address that.
It cannot, and that, but it cannot. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I'm saying, it doesn't go that far. And yes, there would be problems with respect to that, because there's already laws associated with property rights of neighbors vis a vis their neighbor.
Right. I think, you know, I don't know where it fits in your timeline of things, but having a FAQ out there about what happens if there's a nuisance tree that's in a private property? Like, what direction can we give a homeowner? Okay. If that is occurring for them, because it does happen quite often? Sure. Happened to my neighbors? Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, definitely. That's really important. So, anyway. And then, the last two things are just updates. So we're celebrating Arbor Day on Arbor Day this year, which is kind of cool. We're having two different plantings. And the point of having two different plantings was, one, to have that Memorial Arbor Day planting that's traditional, that has happened in Ferndale, you know, for many years. But then also to help out the park system, there was expressed interest to have some shade trees along the ballparks at Carey Park. And so I thought that this would be a nice opportunity to then, to show that this is Arbor Day, we do want to plant trees, you know, this is helping both the city and just, and the parks as well. And so, the cool things about it that I think are that we have a new nonprofit called the Social Forestry Project. They're going to have some volunteers out there. And they're a tree planting organization that they just do, you know, just community tree plantings, kind of like Relief Michigan. And we're going to have our Davy Tree representative, Jim Jenkins, on the day of the plantings to kind of give a little educational piece for that. So that should be really cool. So, I welcome any and all of you to attend. And that's kind of that. And then, the other thing is, cleaning the Ferndale up, we were kind of toying with different ideas for how we could incorporate a tree planting into this event. So we're still kind of working out those details, but we're thinking that maybe replacing some of the trees in the tree pits along Nine Mile, maybe planting elsewhere. So, to be determined, I guess.
Very good.
Great.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Regarding the Davy, the Tree Expert Company, do they have some sort of a, I don't know, update or briefing as to what they found in the city of Ferndale? I mean, I've seen them all around, but is there some sort of a?
As far as like, a formal report update, I don't know if anything is available, but I know in meetings that I've had with them, that the last part of the urban tree canopy study will be conducted by the end of July, which is that last, you can see, it's like a clear hole in our canopy. So it's that top northwest quadrant that'll be reviewed. And then, that will follow with a formal report to say, what is, what is our tree canopy, what's the health of our tree canopy, where are the gaps, where would be, you know, effective places to kind of infill with this tree planting. So, I'm hoping that we have that, and then grant funding opportunities so that we can work on retrieving our city. So that's kind of the update I have to date.
Will that be brought before us, or is it something that we just have to?
The report?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. As soon as it made available, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Through the chair?
Yes.
In regards to the ordinance, is there anything within the ordinance that dictates the types of trees that can be planted in the medians on the streets, the street median, the right-of-way?
Yeah. So we actually took all of that information out, because we felt that it was too restrictive, because, you know, with climate change, that might change, our zoning for our planting might change in the future. So we wanted to leave it as broad as possible so that we have the right tree, the right place. And that was pretty intentional. I think there is a little bit of language of preference towards Michigan natives, but again, with climate change, it's going to have to depend on the type of tree stock that can grow in this area.
If I may, as a suggestion, we may want to consider something that talks about limiting the number of nut-bearing trees on, on street medians, just because people who park cars, driving on the street in the fall, you know, nuts fall, you know, ding people's cars. Trust me, we already have it now. If we allow any more, it's just going to get worse.
Yeah, definitely. Well, part of this that I didn't put in this presentation, and I was expecting to kind of go further, but it's a great kind of time to address it, is I've been working with DPW on creating like, a tree policy. So different than the ordinance of like, what do we do as a city, who are the point of contact? And then, within that, there's a recommended tree list. So it's not in the ordinance, but it is provided so that if a resident wanted to plant in their own yard, or if they did want to plant their own, produce their own tree and plant it in that right-of-way, they could. And they have a guide that they can look to.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Very nice. For your first presentation, that was great.
Thank you.
Excellent. No, so no further questions? All right, let's move on to call to council. Carl, let's start with you tonight. We're going to mix it up.
First order.
Yeah, how are you, sir?
Very good, very good. Thank you for asking. DPW would like to announce that starting today, compost is available to the residents. It's a little early, but there's been a high demand for it.
It's always, it's always a popular day. Yeah, brush the snow off.
Delivered it. It's available self-loaded. It's available at Harding Park and Martin Road, Harding, Martin Road, Wilson and Gary Parks. It's also available at the Kulik Center and at the DPW Yard at 521 East Camborne.
Excellent. Thanks, sir. Kara, anything from Communications?
Nothing.
All right. Joe, anything from Assistant City Manager's Office this evening?
Just wanted to add that including my update on the DOT today, I will also be presenting an update, a similar update to the DDA during their board meeting this month, as well as to the chamber this month as well. And I'll also be providing a later update in the coming weeks on the temporary parking solutions progress as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Danny, anything from HR this evening?
Nothing, Mr. Sir.
All right. Cheryl, how about you? We'll get you next month, or next meeting. Jordan, anything else from Community Economic Development?
Anything else, sir.
All right. Lorena, I see you back there. Anything for recreation this evening? No? Nothing. All right. Chief Sullivan, just in time, anything from the fire department this evening? And is this literally how you're spending your birthday, Chief?
Yes, it literally is. So I know you're all questioning my sanity at this point in time.
More than normal.
We had a early morning house fire in Royal Oak Township today, and three of the young people we fired were there. They did a phenomenal job. It was an arson, a firebombing, trying to get a squatter out. Luckily, the squatter was not there. He's only 21-years-old. He would have been killed had this firebomb would have been right in on top of where he was sleeping. So, with Oakland County Fire Investigating Unit, we're moving forward to see if we can figure out who, what, when, and put an end to it. But just to let everyone know, the people we're hiring did phenomenally.
Yeah, great.
So they're gaining experience, kind of in the wrong area, but nevertheless, they're gaining experience.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Chief, and happy birthday.
Thank you.
Chief Collins, anything for the good of the community this evening?
Good evening, Your Honor, Council. With a heavy heart that I tell you that this evening, after a consul with my wife and my staff, is that I am announcing my retirement effective Friday of this week.
With it, I want to announce as well that Captain Pelazola will be the interim chief starting on Friday.
All right, good. Thank you, Chief.
Nothing, thank you.
April?
No, just a reminder again that if anybody wants to review the budget, that will be held at the library and at the front office for people to review as well, online.
Dan Chris?
Nothing tonight, here.
All right. Councilman Martin?
Nothing tonight, other than I wish you well, Chief.
Councilwoman Leach, May? All the same, I wish you well, Chief, and I hope that we get to see you in the schools. You've done a lot of work with these kids. I don't know if you know it, but there are times that I've seen you working with them and running up and down the halls with them. So I just hope you continue that. Love to see you still in the community. Mayor Protem?
I have nothing, other than thank you, Chief, for your dedication and your service to our community.
Yes. Councilwoman, Piana?
Nothing tonight, other than thank you, Chief. We've had a long career here of 40 years. And so thank you for your service.
And I would just echo, it's been a pleasure to work with you, Chief. Congratulations on 40, or 41?
Forty.
Forty and a half outstanding years of service, and we appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
Next item of business would be a motion to go into closed session.
We have to read that detail, don't we?
Someone has to read it.
We moved, I moved to, we go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute pursuant to MCL 15.268-H, and to consider the purchase and lease of real property up to the time an option to purchase.
Support.
Or at least that real property is obtained pursuant to MCL 15.268-D.
Continue on the back. You still support that? No, I support. Okay. All right. Is there any discussion? Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Protempolika?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Leach May?
Yes.
And Mayor Polka?
Yes, thank you. We are in closed session. Thanks, everyone, for your patience in a relatively long meeting this.